All right, I think we're going to go ahead and get started. I will now reconvene this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board. Can I have a board member certify closed session, please?
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and only such public matters that were identified in the motion. Meeting the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Riffel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Mr. Riffel.
Aye.
Dr. Kavasos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
And can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng. Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Riffel.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffel.
Aye.
Dr. Kavasos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
All right, I will now turn it over to Dr. Kiefer for superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Last week amazingly was the first week of school, and it was a wonderful four days of learning, as far as I'm concerned. Had a chance to visit each of our school buildings, some a couple times. Also spent a couple mornings with some of our drivers at their bus depot. Students and staff and teachers returning to routines. There was building of community, and there was diving right back into learning. In fact, I spent a little bit of time in some of our math classrooms, and some of our students were using their Kid'um resources, which was phenomenal. And I also was able to see some evidence of pacing across and alignment within our middle schools as students in different schools were having similar conversations, both in science and social studies. And then finally, I also had a chance to be assigned a book report. In elementary school, actually it was a kindergarten classroom at Stonehouse, I was asked to review Pete the Cat and submit an audio/video book report to that class, which I honestly have not done yet, but we'll take care of and get back to that class. So it was a great first week. I think we have some video footage as well. Definitely lots of excitement during the first week. And today was also another first day of Week Two, so pretending that we were trying to do it all over again. Last week, I also had the opportunity, and I hope you didn't see the video, but I had an opportunity to do the coin toss for the War Hill Grafton football game. I need to work on my coin tossing skills. Because with the start of school, there's also the start of the fall athletic season. I look forward to cheering on our teams, hope members of our communities, while the board will be out there. In fact, those members of our community aged 65 and older can get a free pass to regular season games by going to their local high school and signing up with the athletic director. I also want to give a shout out to our marching bands who are in full prep mode and had a chance to see the marching lines also on Thursday night at Warner Stadium. Late last week, the 24-25 initial SOL pass rates were released by the Virginia Department of Education. Some data has not yet been released, so we will, as previously planned, share a full report with the board during our October work session. The pass rates released do indicate that our school division met or made gains across all five subject areas as compared to the prior school year and exceeded average state performance across the board. As one measure, we'll dive deeper into this data to continue to learn and grow. We'll also want to work to ensure each student has a connection to their school and are able to engage in meaningful learning opportunities, measures of success that can't always be captured on standardized tests. Wanted to also mention that I encourage all of our families to get involved in their parent/teacher and at the high school level, parent/teacher/student association, helping to foster meaningful connections and opportunities to build community outside of the classroom. As PTA teams and PTSA teams get started for the new school year, I encourage our families to reach out, attend a meeting, and offer your expertise to deepen the school-home connection. Finally, I wanted to talk a little bit about the Superintendent Community Connection Series. In the seven days leading up to the start of school year, I met with each staff at our schools. We discussed feedback received over the course of the last year from the Elevate 28 survey, Superintendent's search process, Superintendent's transition survey, and employee input sessions and focus groups. During those conversations, we were also able to talk about the path ahead. These Community Connection Series that we're hosting, there will be seven of them, incorporate family and community voice through community events starting later this month. The specific dates are on our website to include times and locations. As a teaser, we'll start on Tuesday, September 23rd, and finish up on Wednesday, October 15th. Again, seven sessions spread across three weeks. Look forward to seeing as many people as possible at those sessions. Madam Chair, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer. And so in the future, this will have to say Superintendent's Book Report?
We may, depending upon how the book report comes out. We may preview it here, but I would want the students to grade it, or excuse me, assess it first.
Are there any reports from board members? Mr. Hoseng, you do have one? Okay.
This past, or last week, we had the New Horizons Board of Trustees meeting, our first one for the school year. I was elected again for the vice chair position for the Board of Trustees. We had a presentation from the William &amp; Mary Family Counseling Center. And what they do is, they provide counseling for families, couples, students on a wide variety of issues. It can be academics, it can be depression, it can be family issues, but they will provide counseling for all those individuals. WJCC is the largest division or the largest community that they support with about 45% of the individuals that they see coming from Williamsburg James City County. And they say that that's probably mostly to do with being located so close to Williamsburg James City County, obviously. So we had a, we worked on or discussed our strategic plan. Earlier this year, they took a lot of input from a lot of different individuals, whether it be teachers, students, the board, parents, community members. And so they're getting all that information together, and they're going to be presenting that to us in a future meeting in order for us to review the strategic plan. Right now, what they have is for our mission is it states that we create a supportive environment that empowers learners to embrace innovation, thrive in diverse settings, and positively impact their communities. The vision is to provide every learner with the skills, knowledge, and support they need to thrive and become future-ready. Through our strategic plan, we have, we're looking at three basic pillars. The first one's dynamic and diverse leader, or learners, excuse me. The second one is exceptional faculty and facilities. And the final one is strong community and business partnership. So we're going to be incorporating all three of those into the strategic plan. We also reviewed a legal services contract, sort of like what we have as a school board, school division here. So we did that. We reviewed the New Horizons Educational Foundation, Board of Directors, and also the operating fund statement, which was finalized in June of this year.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Hoseng, and congrats on being elected the vice chair.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hunley, I think you said you had something?
Yes, although we haven't met recently, just wanted everybody to get on their calendar that Williamsburg James City County Schools Foundation will be having an evening on the lawn on October 9th. You should start seeing that on our website, and you can get tickets per tables. And of course, the proceeds are going to go to support our local public schools. And it's for our 10th anniversary. And if I understand, I think tomorrow, the teachers' grant applications are set to hit the schools. It's a different timeline this time because they have to be in early because we will be giving them out in January instead of February, as in the past.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Anything else? If not, I have a brief update from the School Liaison Committee. On last Friday, August 29th, the School Liaison Committee met to discuss a number of items, but the most pertinent being the joint agreement. School Liaison Committee consists of myself and Mrs. Donner and Dr. Kiefer from the school board, Ms. Ruth Larson, Dr. McGlinnan, and Mr. Scott Stevens from Board of Supervisors, and Mr. Trivett, Ms. Kernscheer, and Vice Mayor Dent. So we all met on Friday. Prior to that meeting, the two funding partners, various members of the two funding partners had met also several times because they have been very hard at work hashing out an agreement. They have made tremendous progress. They've spent many hours working through various scenarios in order to find the most fair solution that will ensure that various needs of both county students and city students are met. And there are still some final details that all three boards are working through. But we are extremely hopeful that a final-final agreement will be forthcoming in the next few weeks. But like I said, there's still some things where we are working on. But I know that all three bodies who are involved in these discussions have stated that their goal is to produce a joint agreement, so we are hopeful that that will in fact occur soon. All right. We will go on to our proposed agenda items. Item 5.01, Review of Fiscal Year 2025 Year-End Financial Report and Proposed Commitments of Fund Balance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Renee Ewing, our Chief Financial Officer, is with us this evening to make a presentation. I'm particularly pleased with the data that she'll be sharing with you in terms of how we did this year in terms of our operating budget. Renee?
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, I will be presenting our preliminary financial status as of June 30th and recommendations for the use of remaining funds. We'll start with a revenue overview, look at our year-end status, and then discuss proposed allocations of the surplus to support our long-term financial stability and priorities. It is important to note that we have not gone through our external audit at this point, so these numbers are preliminary and they are un-audited. My team and I have worked hard to make sure the information presented this evening is as accurate as possible, but as we go through the audit process over the next several weeks, these numbers could change slightly. Here you will see a breakdown of our actual revenue as compared to our adopted budget. Our actual revenue for the year is 183.1 million, which is approximately 2.3 million more than our adopted budget. Some of the items contributing to the increase in revenue is student enrollment higher than what we had budgeted, which increased some of our state funding, higher-than-anticipated sales tax revenue, higher-than-normal interest revenue, as well as the timing of Impact Aid reimbursements, which increased our federal revenue this year. Our expenditures in opening conferences amount to 176.7 million for the year. When you compare this amount to our revenue, the amount of funds remaining at the end of the year is approximately 6.4 million. To provide context, this chart shows the trend of funds remaining at year-end over the past several years. In fiscal year '22, a spending plan was approved by the localities to support school bus replacements, safety and security items identified in the Threat Risk Vulnerability Report, and funding to allow for the War Hill Gym to become an emergency shelter. In fiscal years '23 and '24, we were spending out ESAR grants, which contributed to the higher amounts seen in those years. Most of the funds remaining in those years were allocated to fund the new pre-K centers. The year-end surplus is made up of two primary components, excess revenue and expenditure savings. We received 2.3 million in revenue above our original appropriation. However, because this additional revenue was not matched with a corresponding expenditure appropriation, we were not authorized to spend it. It's important to note that final state revenue is determined based on the average daily membership, or ADM, as of March each year, with final numbers confirmed in April. This timeline means that we typically do not receive confirmation of our final state entitlements until May or early June, which limits our ability to strategically plan for additional expenditures before year-end. We realized 4.1 million in expenditure savings, representing approximately 2.3% of our total fiscal year '25 budget. Of that, 2.8 million came from salary and benefit savings, primarily due to open positions and natural attrition. The remaining 1.3 million came from non-salary and benefit accounts. Throughout the year, we strategically reallocated funds made available through vacancies and attrition. This allowed us to support key priorities aligned with our strategic plan while maintaining our target of keeping year-end surpluses below 2.5%. Some of the initiatives we were able to fund include bonus payments for all employees, matching state-provided funds, auditorium improvements at Jamestown High School and James Blair Middle School, replacement vehicle purchases for some operations staff, and funding for textbook adoptions in secondary English Language Arts, elementary math, Algebra II, and AP Environmental Science. In summary, our surplus reflects responsible financial management and our commitment to aligning resources with strategic priorities while maintaining flexibility. We'll continue to monitor and refine our processes to ensure we're making the most of every dollar. With these funds that are remaining, we are recommending strategic allocations that strengthen our long-term financial health while addressing ongoing needs. First, we propose establishing a healthcare reserve fund of 4.5 million. With the transition to a self-funded health insurance plan, the school division is now directly responsible for paying employee healthcare claims rather than paying a fixed premium to an outside insurance provider. This change brings both opportunities for cost savings and increased financial responsibility. Industry best practices recommend that organizations maintain a reserve equal to three months of average claims to safeguard against unexpectedly high claims or delays in reimbursements. We are recommending that the board commit 4.5 million of the year-end balance to the creation of a healthcare reserve fund. While this amount represents approximately two months of estimated claims for our initial plan year, short of the three-month recommendation, it establishes a critical foundation for long-term stability in this new funding model. Over time, we will work toward building the reserve to the recommended level. It also positions us well if there is a cost to exit the local choice health insurance program, which we will not know until early 2026. Second, we are recommending that the board commit 650,000 to a textbook fund. In recent years, we have managed to support textbook adoptions and instructional material updates by relying on salary savings. While this approach has allowed us to meet immediate needs, it is not a sustainable or reliable funding source. Our adopted operating budget includes only 250,000 annually for textbooks. This is not sufficient to cover upcoming adoption cycles, which you will hear more about this evening. By adding this reserve, we can better manage the cyclical nature of textbook adoption and replacement, ensuring that we have the resources available when large-scale purchases are required. With these recommended uses of the remaining funds, approximately 1.2 million would then be returned to the localities, 1.1 million to James City County, and 127,000 to the city of Williamsburg. As a reminder, James City County plans to use 1 million of the funds we have remaining to support our fiscal year 2026 budget. The full June financial report will be included on the agenda at the next board meeting for your review, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing. Any questions from the board? Mr. Riffel?
Ms. Ewing, for clarity, the $1 million we're just saying about the James City County, is that in addition to, they need at least $1 million to, right?
They need at least $1 million, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All right. I think that's it. Thank you. All right, item 5.02, Review 2025-26 Textbook Selection and Adoption Proposal.
Madam Chair, this evening, Ms. Ford and Ms. Mompoint will talk the board through our proposal for textbook selection and adoption over the course of the '25-'26 school year. I believe I'm turning it over to Robin to start.
Yes, sir.
Welcome, Ms. Ford.
Welcome. Good afternoon, Dr. Kiefer, Madam Chair, and members of the board. The key priority of our strategic plan, Elevate 28, requires our students and staff have high-quality instructional materials to facilitate aligned, rigorous instruction and meaningful student engagement designed to meet the needs of all learners, ensuring that every WJCC learner is supported to meet, reach his or her academic goals. This afternoon, Mrs. Mompoint and I are pleased to share the Curriculum and Instruction Department's textbook selection and adoption proposed work plan for the upcoming school year. We will begin with a summary review of all content areas included in this proposal, and then provide additional details for each component of the selection and adoption process. When prioritizing which content areas and courses to focus on in a given school year, our team considers the revisions to the standards of learning by the Board of Education, the availability of course textbooks, and the age of current WJCC textbooks and textbook materials. This year, our department recommends WJCC conduct the textbook selection and adoption process to address elementary textbook and textbook material needs for courses in science and social studies. Our request for an elementary selection and adoption process for the third consecutive year is compelled by several factors. First, historically, the Virginia Department of Education has followed a seven-year cycle of reviewing and revising the standards of learning, placing each of the core subjects, English, math, science, and social studies, in separate years. The first year of the cycle has been the year the Board of Education approves the revised standards. The second year of the seven-year cycle has been the crosswalk year during which school divisions could prepare for the implementation of new standards by selecting aligned instructional materials, adjusting division curriculum documents, and prepare instructional leaders and staff through professional learning. During the third year of the cycle, the new standards are tested in the SOL assessments. Recently, however, the standards have been reviewed and revised on a compressed timeframe with significant revisions being made to English, math, and social studies standards. The second consideration in reviewing and selecting textbooks for elementary science and social studies is evidence-based instructional practices and high-quality instructional materials are foundational to our work to ensure that every child achieves academically. It is essential that our teachers and students have the tools they need to engage in instruction that is tightly aligned to the current standards of learning, enable them to meet a wide range of diverse learning needs, and engage in meaningful practice to develop a depth of understanding and a high level of skill proficiency. The work WJCC has undertaken to select high-quality instructional materials for our elementary schools needs to extend to science and social studies. The decision for when to adopt and to select and adopt new materials must also be informed by the life cycle of the standards. If we delay the process, we run the risk of making the investment of time and funds too close to the start of the next cycle to review and revise standards, potentially limiting the utility of the materials to instruction.
For secondary courses, we recommend WJCC conduct the selection and adoption process to address textbook and textbook material needs for courses in four content areas, English, Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies. We plan to distribute the selection and adoption processes for the content areas across the school year based on timelines that support the scope of the review work for each course or content area, provide time for staff, parents, and guardians, and the community to review and provide feedback for the textbooks under consideration, and ensure the work is completed in accordance with WJCC's spending timelines. The WJCC project timeline related to social studies is dependent upon the Virginia Department of Education's release of the approved textbook list for social studies on all levels. A delay in the release of the state's approved high-quality instructional materials may impact the textbook selection and adoption process in that subject. We will provide an update to Dr. Kiefer if a change in the VDOE's approval timeline impacts our process. In Phase 1 of the selection and adoption process, the review committee is formed based on administrator and coordinator recommendations, and individual's interests are recorded through the Engage With Us process. The review committee will engage in a series of meetings to review and discuss the textbooks and materials under consideration. When possible, these meetings include information provided by textbook vendors and the opportunity for committee members to ask questions of the company representatives. Each course or content timeline will include a staff and community period during which WJCC staff, parents, guardians, and community members will have access to print and digital textbook materials under consideration to review and provide feedback using a community evaluation rubric. Digital access to the materials and feedback rubrics will be posted on the WJCC website, and the print materials and rubrics will be available at central office during business hours. The CNI department will also host an evening textbook fair for each content area to provide staff and community members the opportunity to review materials and speak with curriculum leaders. At the conclusion of Phase 1, the committee considers all input gathered through the committee and community review process to identify the top two or three textbook options that will best serve WJCC students. The identified textbooks move to Phase 2 of the process. During Phase 2, print materials of the textbooks and textbook materials will be available at each school location, and staff will receive support from the curriculum coordinators and lead teachers to participate in the review process. Phase 2 concludes with a final review committee meeting during which members review all feedback and make a textbook recommendation. At the school board work session, curriculum and instruction staff will provide a summary presentation of the review process, including data to describe the feedback collected. Board members vote to approve or not approve the committee's recommendation at the regular meeting. Our team recommends that the review committee for each content area be composed of a school board member, division staff such as a CNI director, a curriculum coordinator, a member of the instructional technology team, other representatives from the CNI and Student Services Departments who support students' unique needs, school administrators, general educators from all levels, from all-level schools, specialists representing the course under consideration, and parents, guardians, and community members.
The work of the review committee and the evaluation rubrics will address core components of high-quality and The work of the review committee and the evaluation rubrics will address core components of high-quality instructional materials and evidence-based instructional practices, such as the criteria shown on this slide, for each course being reviewed. Materials under consideration will be evaluated according to specific course criteria to include alignment to the current standards of learning, quality and utility of teacher, student, and family resources, intervention, extension, and assessment components, and digital tools. The estimated cost to purchase elementary science and social studies textbooks and textbook materials for the content areas in this proposal are based on preliminary quotes provided by vendors.
The estimated cost to purchase textbooks and textbook materials for the secondary content areas in this proposal are based on preliminary quotes provided by vendors. The estimated cost for the entire textbook plan is six hundred sixty seven thousand, two hundred twenty five dollars. At this time, we're, we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Are there questions, Ms. Hunley?
Yeah, so you'll need at least four school board members, right? So, one for each of the.
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
You don't need six members because you don't split it by secondary?
Well, yeah, so in the past, we have had school board members who have shared on both
Okay.
levels, so that's also an option.
So it's either four or six.
Okay.
Any other questions this time? I, I noticed that this total number resembles the textbook reserve fund number. Does actually exceed it slightly? Would, is that going to deplete it immediately?
Well, we do have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the operating budget, and then there's the textbook reserve, so we will have a little bit of buffer.
Okay.
And our goal would be in years moving forward to continue to look to put into the textbook reserve.
All right, looks like that's, that's it from the board, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item five point zero three, review request for proposal. Number two zero two, five zero, five four three, plagiarism prevention and AI detection software.
Ms. Monpoint will talk us through this RFP process, the, the title of which is, is, is a little bit of a misnomer for me. I, I see what we're bringing forward to you as a tool for both our staff and students in terms of enhancing their writing. But Courtney, let, let's talk through that for the board, please.
All right, good evening again. Um, agenda item five point zero three outlines request for proposal two zero, two five, zero, five, four, three for plagiarism prevention and an artificial intelligence detection tool for grades six through twelve. The purpose of this RFP was to secure contract through competitive negotiation for a resource that supports academic institutions in determining if students are writing or submitting original work. This initiative aligns with school board policies DJ and DJR regarding purchasing procedures and regulations. The RFP was released on May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five, with proposals due June twelfth, two thousand and twenty five. Notices were posted on the James City County website, the Commonwealth of Virginia Procurement Portal, and the DemandStar Procurement Portal to ensure a competitive and transparent process. The RFP committee met on July twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five, to review vendor demonstrations and evaluate proposals. Academic integrity and responsible technology use are core commitments of WJCC schools. Our current tool, Turn It In Feedback Studio, has served the division for many years. However, the evolving landscape of generative AI now requires a modern solution to help us address both plagiarism and AI-generated, and AI-generated content in ways that align with our instructional goals. Copy Leaks offers the capability to assist us in detecting both plagiarism and AI-assisted writing, supporting teachers and guiding students toward ethical use of technology and reinforcing the division's Generative AI Guidebook and Virginia's two thousand and twenty four English Standards of Learning. Pending board approval, the next steps will include contract finalization, integration into Canvas, and professional development for teachers to ensure effective implementation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Monpoint. Any questions from the board? I think we probably don't know enough to ask any questions. I think that's what it is, uh, if I'm totally honest.
You could use AI to generate questions.
Mr. Riffle?
Could you just tell us like how the program works and potentially like what we're looking at here? Yeah, because like, you know, I can think about it like being like a little paperclip that comes up in Word sometimes, and that was not very helpful, but.
So, um, I can tell you how our previous, um, program was utilized, and I may have to ask, um, Ms. Brandt how this actually looks. So Ms. Brandt is our, um, English, um, our secondary coordinator. So I'm going to allow her to just tell you exactly what it looks like.
So the turn-in program, um, students would submit their work, and then, um, the program would kind of, um, go through, um, its, I don't know, database or whatever, and would tell the students, you know, what is being plagiarized, to let them submit again to work on that or cite it precisely. We did get a demo for copy leaks. It worked the same way. Um, and with the generative AI, teachers have the ability to, um, have different levels, you know, because we have in our guidebook whether, you know, teachers say it's a green light, you can, you can use AI. Yellow light would be eh, some things, and red light would be absolutely not. We need it to be your, um, you know, your authentic words. So there's levels in that, that in the program, and we would train the teachers to use it in a way and teach the students that they would have probably multiple submissions so that they can learn. Does that make sense? So it shows them where is there some questionable parts. I don't know if you can like hundred percent detect AI, but it could show like this is some sources we think it's coming from. Does that make sense? So it's new for us, and that's kind of what the demo had shown. The two things that, you know, obviously if it's plagiarized, it could show that. If it's generative AI, it's, you know, possible. So we think, does that make sense?
And I think the important thing to note is that it's used as a, as a resource. It's not an end-all, be-all, conversations have to happen if, if there is something that's detected. Um, our teachers are absolutely encouraged, um, that first step is to have a conversation with students.
And truly give them multiple tries sometime, you know what I'm saying? Like, you know, have them try a couple times before the final so that the students can learn. Does that make sense? Like, okay, you need to cite this because it's showing that you have not cited this properly and having those trainings.
So this would be for, for an assignment in which AI was allowed to be used, but they need to learn proper citation?
Yes, you can have it where if they say you can use the generative AI, then I'm not going to have that toggled on, in the program, but the plagiarism will be always, I think.
When would it be considered plagiarism outright if, I mean, you're saying the students need to learn what is detected. The students know if they used AI or not.
Right.
So where is that line?
I'm sorry, please repeat that question.
At what point is it, at what point is it though actually plagiarism? Because the student will, maybe the student needs to, if they're learning how to cite something, then I, I see they need to learn how to cite it. But if they were told not to use it, and they, they know if they copied and pasted it, or if they spoke into, they know if they used it. So when does it become plagiarism versus learning?
Yes, when they, if they choose, you know, like you only have three tries, like as a teacher, I'll say you have three tries. Does that make sense to submit?
Right, but I think the other part of it is that, um, AI detection software is, is not as strong as we may anticipate that it is. And so one of the things that we've learned through our AI cohort is that the detection software can't necessarily determine whether something is AI or not AI. I think part of what our work with teachers on in terms of this resource is helping to inform their conversations with students around the originality of what he or she submits. And if, if it appears that your writing does not match the voice that you've used in other writing, then that signals to me as a teacher that we need to have a conversation around, gosh, this, this doesn't look like the work I've seen from Daniel before. Help me understand, where did you find this? How did you, how did you come up with these kinds of things? The, there is a challenge, I think, when it comes to online programs and hoping or assuming that a program can be the end-all and be-all in terms of plagiarism. And I, I don't think that there is such a program that exists. And this resource is really, I think, about helping our students and helping our teachers know when conversations need to occur around appropriate citation, re-categorizing phraseology and terminology, because it looks like it's pretty closely aligned to something that you did not actually write. Does it need to be attributed to someone else? So there is, it's, it's more of an art than a science when it comes to utilizing these kinds of tools.
Dr. Keever, what does exactly does it mean to have a conversation?
I mean, as a, as a teacher, I would have a conversation with you as a student to say, Dr. Gavazos, the, the way this is written gives me the sense that you did not do it on your own. Can you help me know where you found the information or, because the other three things that you've written over the course of this first nine weeks doesn't, doesn't match the language that you've used here. So it's a, it's a, it's a dialogue between the two of us so that I can help get to the bottom of where did that work come from?
Am I to understand that somebody gets three chances to amend their quote-unquote inappropriate?
I think it, I think it depends on the actual assignment itself. So I, I used to do multiple drafts for a teacher and, and ask for feedback, or we'd do class editing. Like, we would round robin class editing within a classroom to determine, how can I make this better? Does this, does this paragraph make sense? Should this paragraph be moved later? What's, what's the feedback from the class? So I don't, I think that the, the three pieces, uh, information from Ms. Brandt is really around, in, in practice, it may be you've, you've got three opportunities to enhance this work, and I'll give you three feedback loops, at which point it needs to be a final submission, not that you just keep turning it in until you get to the score that you want to have. Does that make, does that answer your question?
Not really, but.
I want to try to answer it for you. I mean, I, I, I think that, especially when it comes to language arts and working with students on original writing or writing papers, we want staff to give students feedback on how to improve and question thinking, right? And at, at that same time, there's an end game, and that end game is we need you to submit this for a final product. Whether that's on the, the second time or the third time, we, we want you to get to the point where you submit something and say, this is a final, and I would like to be assessed in totality.
Let's, let's let Mrs. Donner ask her question, and then we'll circle back if, if you have a second question. Does that work? Okay. Mrs. Donner?
So Microsoft Copilot says if I'm asking this question as a school board member, what question could I ask? So my question is, how will students be educated about the critical and about the ethical use of AI and plagiarism detection tools as part of their digital citizenship curriculum?
I actually love that question. As Dr. Keever mentioned, um, we, uh, there was a cohort of us who actually went through, um, AI, digital, digital citizenship, generative AI, um, professional development. Um, and what came out of that work was our guidebook. Um, and in that guidebook, there's a section for, uh, what are expectations for teachers, what are expectations for students? How can I effectively or meaningfully use AI? Um, and so those conversations, um, actually started a bit last year. But as we continue to learn more, um, our students are educated more. Um, and so we're hoping to use that guidebook, um, with fidelity, um, this year to educate our students on effective use and how to submit original work.
I saw three hands at once. Go go, Mr. Hoseing, Ms. Hunley, and Mr. Riffle.
I guess just a question for myself. Hypothetically, I'm a history teacher. I have twenty, twenty-five students in my class. I give an assignment for a five to ten-page paper on whatever subjects. Does this program, is it capable of looking at every paper that's submitted? Or is it just a limited number where it's a random choice between the students?
It's capable of looking at each student's paper.
Okay, um, Ms. Hunley?
My question is if I'm a poor writer and I continue to submit, and I, I think I've done the best I can do with AI assistance, and I submit it, and it is plagiarized, what is the, um, sorry, what is the, what is the, um, is a child suspect, I mean, what is the consequences of submitting something that has, you, you knowingly have plagiarized and sent? Because you had warnings and you submitted anyway.
Um, so I, I'll share this, you know, in the past, we had academic dishonesty, um, guidelines, um, for students. And so that does not change. I mean, it's still academic dishonesty. Um, so whatever the behavioral, um, consequences were for academic dishonesty, they will, they will remain the same.
Policy JFC covers that, and I think Dr. Brown took a look at our data from last year related to AI plagiarism. Remind me.
So, uh, we, I looked at the major referrals that needed administrative response and scholastic dishonesty, and there was a total of forty-five across the division. Eighteen of those were related to AI. Fifteen of the eighteen were level-one conversations, phone call home, and then there were three students who received in-school suspension. And it, just off a real brief scan of those incidents, appear to be a repeated incident of the student using it. Our Code of Conduct does authorize the use of level-three-out-of-school suspension, however, that was not enacted last year.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Riffle?
I appreciate you bringing up Turn It In. And what's the reason why we're removing, like going from something else to this new potential? Why is Turn It Not useful enough right now? Because it's forty-three thousand dollars annually for two years. It's like, is it worth for forty-five students, right?
We, we were at a place where the turn-in contract, um, was up, and so we had to go back through the RFP process for, for another, uh, resource.
And what was the, do we know how much Turn It was before?
The, the competitive scoring process through the RFP led us to bring forward this recommendation. So there's an RFP review committee that meets to look at the various proposals submitted, and there is a criteria that you rank each of the firms that might have submitted a proposal on. And in this case, the, the team is recommending that we go with, is it called copy leaks? Copy leaks.
So in place of Turn It In, is it, like, this, I didn't know we were going to have two at the same time. That's what I was, thank you.
Yeah, we're terming one and bringing another one on board because the contract ends, it's, it's already ended, or it ends at the end of October. Right.
Thank you.
Dr. Gavazos, did you have any follow-up questions?
No, no, I'm fine, thank you.
Are you sure?
Uh, Dr. Brown actually answered.
Okay.
A, a different part of the same.
I'm so glad he's here to do that.
All right. Anything else from board members at this point? All right, thank you very much. Item five point zero four, review purchase requests for playground upgrades at Laurel Lane Elementary School.
Good evening.
Mr. Snipes, do you want to go? You were looking at me like, was he going to say something? I'm going to say, Mr. Snipes.
Okay. Uh, good evening, school board chair, school board members, and Dr. Keever. Tonight's, uh, proposed agenda item is an elevation twenty, supports elevation twenty-eight priority, organizational effectiveness and efficiency, and is being brought for your consideration is the review of purchase requests for playground upgrades for Laurel Lane Elementary School. This project was approved in the FY twenty-six CIP in an amount of three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. As you're aware, school playground projects are ranked yearly according to priority and condition. Uh, WJCC Schools is moving to provide better access and inclusive equipment to all playgrounds. The scope of the work for this project includes replacing one aging and resting playground at Laurel Lane with a new playground, including accessible play features, new border with ramp, and engineered wood fiber mulch. As I mentioned, this is a placeholder agenda item, and the final vendor quotation will be included on the September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five agenda. Also, as previously mentioned, there is, there are ten thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars remaining in the FY twenty-five CIP plan for additional playground upgrades. The superintendent recommends the board review the project information and be prepared to vote at the September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Snipes. Um, Mr. Hoseing, have a question?
Do we have an estimated cost at this point?
No, not at this time. We're waiting on a vendor quote. We previously did, a couple of months ago, we put one playground in at Laurel Lane. Um, it will, um, this one is just a little different as it does include a poured playground surface. I believe the previous playground was two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, so we can expect it to be a little, I won't say a little. We can expect it to be less because we won't have the poured playground surface in.
Mrs. Donner?
Do we have a legal requirement to have accessible playgrounds?
We don't have a legal requirement to have accessible playgrounds. Um, when we discussed this with Mr. Brown and his staff, and we, we asked, um, Um, when we discussed this with Mr. Brown and his staff and we, we asked, um, the teachers a couple of years ago, what did they, what they wanted to see? Um, we then went back and created a inclusive playground, um, structure, which would include certain things about our playgrounds. Um, Laurel Lane is one that, if you go to Laurel Lane, that is the first playground that we, we've done like that. Um, it is very inclusive, um, it has a, uh, access for students uh, that don't have the same abilities as others to interact on the same playground.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Item five point zero five, review memorandum of understanding between WJCC Schools Foundation and WJCC School Board. And I believe we have a guest with us this evening.
Indeed, we do.
Sitting on the other side.
Mr. Kelly, it's great to see you.
First of all, uh, no AI was used in the development of these comments? So, um. Run that through our software just to ensure. You don't have it yet, so I'm good. Uh, thank you, Dr. Kever, Madam Chair, school board members and, uh, many familiar faces around the outside of the room. Um, I should not be here this afternoon. I don't even want to be here today. Penny Pully should be here. As you all know, Penny was the chair of the foundation from twenty nineteen to her unexpected passing at the end of July. Penny was passionate about this community, public education and the Williamsburg James City County Education Foundation. Penny was a one-of-a-kind force of nature. She is and will be missed by this community. And she is and will be missed by your education foundation. Penny was very excited about the foundation celebrating its tenth anniversary this year and began the planning of some very special events in celebration of this anniversary. Uh, your foundation is excited and committed to make this year the best of the foundation's ten years. We know that it, that it was what Penny would want. In twenty-ten, when I came to the school board, I heard Jim Nichols talk about this district needing a foundation. When we interviewed superintendents and eventually hired Dr. Constantino, we made clear the board's expectation of starting an education foundation. I was a new board member. I thought it was a nice idea, but I did not share the passion or excitement of others. We had a kickoff breakfast at Ford's Colony and it was there that I was amazed by how many people were there. Is there that I learned I was wrong? This community has a passion for education and a thirst to support, to support its public schools. That thirst continues today and the foundation is happy to fill this void. By the end of twenty-twenty-four, your foundation has raised over seven hundred thousand dollars in donations in its ten-year history. The foundation has awarded grants to teachers for innovative learning initiatives, supported the Teacher of the Year event and made awards to those who have been recognized at that event and helped start and support the teacher's supply store. We have two special events planned in celebration of our tenth anniversary. As already mentioned, on October ninth, we are having an evening on the lawn at the Raymond Mason School of Business with music, food, refreshments and a silent auction. As of last week, we had almost sold out, so we had twenty-eight tables and we had over, I think, twenty-one as end of last week that were already sold. So it's, uh, it's gonna be a fun event. On March tenth, twenty-twenty-six, we'll return to where it all started and a breakfast event at Ford's Colony. Look for the details in the coming months. Of course, applications for teaching learning, learning grants was either set to open today or tomorrow. I'm not sure which day that was. And your foundation will also be part of the Christmas parade and will probably be lots of mascots there as well. Um, you can learn more about the activities of the foundation on our website, wjccschoolsfoundation.org. And of course, it's an excellent place to make a donation for support of the foundation and public schools. I also want to take this time to thank the members of the foundation board. This is a very active board and board members have continued to work hard to further the foundation activities, even in these difficult times. Um, they do exceptional work. They are all very busy with day jobs and families but still volunteer for this worthwhile and important cause. So, um, you have a great foundation. You have a great foundation board, so. Questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. Um, any questions from board members? Mrs. Donner?
The board would like a table before they sell out, maybe?
We can, we can do that? I think, I don't know. I have to talk to Lauren about that, but, uh, I think that's available, sure.
Well, thank you very much for being here tonight. Thank you for your comments. Um, we too actually wish that Penny Pully was here, um, but we thank you for stepping up and filling her very big shoes. Um, and I know that you, you have a very big heart like she did too, so I think, I think you're gonna do a great job filling in for her at this time and we just thank you for what you're doing.
Yeah, I won't fill those shoes, but I'll do my best.
Ms. Hunley?
Um, just one thing, you mentioned the parade and I know it was, um, Penny's desire for us to have a float and not have to walk with the mascots. Not that we didn't enjoy, but that was something, because holding those poles and, um, she did say that we were gonna have a float and I'm not sure who on the committee, I, I would love to see that come to pass. Um, it was also dangerous, a little dangerous for the mascots, walking children running out, they could trip, fall, so I'm not sure what committee will do that.
Um, I think, um, Michael's got a trailer lined up for that and so we're, we're working towards that and also have some more lights.
Okay, yeah. I just didn't want that to get lost.
This new paradigm where you're in the, in the dark parade, it's, gets dark.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Well, we look forward to the continued, um, partnership. Thank you for all that the foundation does for our schools. And the school board is much appreciative of you and, and everyone on your board and, and your organization.
Thank you much. Appreciate it. Now I get to leave.
You're welcome to stay. Um, item five point six, review of calendar, oh. Review of calendar year twenty-twenty-six, school board meeting dates.
Let me, if I could, Madam Chair, mention that we are bringing forward board calendar dates for twenty-twenty-six, a little bit earlier than we have in years past. Typically, this calendar is provided to the board in January and we ask you to approve that calendar at your organizational meeting. As we considered, uh, being more thoughtful in our planning process, both admin, administratively and then also working with the board, we thought it would be important to put that calendar in front of you as early as possible. Uh, there are a couple of, of nuanced changes that I did want to point out in the calendar. You might recognize some of them based on the budget calendar approved in our last meeting. Uh, for instance, in the month of July, excuse me, in the month of January, we'll meet three times. There will be the work session and the regular meeting, but in between those two, we intend to have a budget work session. Uh, that is to help us align our more compressed and earlier budgeting process uh, with the, the work of the board. Additionally, I wanted to point out that in the month of March, there, you'll see a little bit of a gap in our meetings. The, the first meeting in March is March third, second meeting in March is March twenty-fourth. That is to allow for the spring presentation at Berkeley Middle School to happen in terms of their set, et cetera, and, and not necessarily have us get in the way of, of their progress. Uh, the highlighted information on the calendar in June, in terms of start time is related to when we may need to get together to, to look at components of the superintendent's evaluation. And then the last thing I wanted to point out was the July planning retreat and work session. Uh, we, I, I would like for us to be able to have a board administrative planning retreat during the course of that July seventh day, starting in the morning and then ending with, uh, the school board work session as we've typically done, one meeting in July. That, those are in essence, the, the revisions and enhancements to this calendar. I'm happy to answer questions about it in the event that you have any.
I do have a question.
Mr. Riffle?
Um, April first, Wednesday, is there a particular reason why we moved to?
Yes, I'm sorry. I should have covered that when I was talking about March. Uh, the spring break holiday is such that there's spring break in, in the, in the midst of that and didn't necessarily want three in the month of March, three meetings. So we moved off of March thirty-first to Wednesday, April first. And then we'll come back, that's to be the work session, and then we'll come back around and, and do the regular, uh, regular meeting later in the month of April. We've typically, in the months of November and then the spring break month of April, done back-to-back meetings, one week and then the next week. So that's typically, that's basically what you'll see here. It's just in a reverse order of what we typically done.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I put the dates in now. All right, now we are moving on to our discussion items. Uh, six point zero one, WJCC Schools twenty-five, twenty-six, Bright Beginnings pre-K program in progress.
As Mr. Walker and Ms. Nelson come to the microphones, I want to say how incredibly excited I am about the presentation and the fact that on Wednesday, September the twenty-fourth, we will host a groundbreaking for our pre-K buildings.
Do we get hats and shovels?
Uh, that's under the question and answer portion, Ms. Hunley. You're, you're ahead of us. I do believe there will be hats and shovels for many people involved in that. I had a chance to spend time with the Bright Beginnings staff on August the nineteenth. Uh, and they were gathered together and basically the similar listening sessions that I've done for the other school staffs and that staff is so absolutely excited about the opportunity for new spaces and going from five buildings to two and really becoming a unified team around our program for our pre-K students. So I'm thrilled about the direction we're headed and really excited about the presentation tonight. Sean, I hope I didn't take any of your script, but if you could kick us off, I would appreciate it.
Sir, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members and Dr. Kever. Thank you for the opportunity to share information about the Bright Beginnings pre-K program. This evening, we will reflect on the history of the program, its current status, kindergarten readiness data and a summary leading to groundbreaking this fall for the two new pre-K centers. The Bright Beginnings pre-K program is directly aligned to the school division's strategic plan, Elevate Twenty-Eight and its key priority, academic achievement. To ensure that our youngest learners have access to high-quality preschool education focusing on the whole child and fostering kindergarten readiness. So let's take a moment to look in the rearview mirror and reflect upon the birth and growth of the Bright Beginnings pre-K program. Almost fifty years ago, in nineteen seventy-six, the Early Education Development Center opened at Norwich Elementary in response to the Individuals with Disabilities and Education Act, otherwise known as IDEA. Then in nineteen eighty-three, the Bright Beginnings pre-K program was established as a federal demonstration grant site serving at-risk pre-K children. And now today, in twenty-twenty-five, we have thirty-two pre-K classrooms spread across five elementary school sites at Clarebird Baker, DJ Montague, JB Blaton, Laurel Lane and Norwich Elementary. Students participating in the Bright Beginnings pre-K program enjoy a four-hour school day from eight-thirty to twelve-thirty or nine-forty-five to one-forty-five, depending on the location site. Students are serviced by all highly qualified and state-licensed teachers. Programming supports the development of the whole child, meaning a student's social, academic, self-care and emotional needs and skills are met. In the world of our youngest learners, our Bright Beginning staff have continued to strengthen and refine instructional practices and have implemented our adopted Stream N three curriculum, ensuring that every child begins their educational journey with a strong foundation. Of course, none of this will be possible without the local funding support from the county and the city and the Virginia Preschool Initiative, VPI, which is the state's program intended to provide quality preschool to at-risk three and four-year-olds, to reduce those disparities among children entering kindergarten and to reduce those risk factors that may lead to early academic failure. We know that early learning is most impactful when families are true partners with us. That's why our teachers conducted almost sixteen hundred instructional fa- intentional family meetings and two family engagement nights where more than eighty families joined us for hands-on learning activities and quality time with their children in a welcoming, school-based setting. We're also proud to share that all five of our Bright Beginning sites met the state's annual Virginia Quality Birth to Five or VQB five, Quality Expectations. Meeting this standard reflects our team's commitment to excellence in early learning environments. Bright Beginnings program is designed to serve not only students who meet the state's Virginia Preschool Initiative criteria, but also those who face additional challenges that impact their early development. Under the state criteria, this includes children from families at or below two-hundred percent of the federal poverty level. Students experiencing homelessness, children whose parents did not complete high school, possibly families impacted by incarceration, substance abuse or domestic violence, and children with disabilities or delays who qualify for special education services. In short, the program intentionally supports both students with identified disabilities and those who have faced significant life challenges, making sure the children who need preschool the most have access to it. This chart shows the current and previous seven years student enrollment for the Bright Beginnings pre-K program as of the official September thirtieth count. The first row shows total student enrollment. The next two rows show the number and percentages of students receiving special education services. You will notice that more than half of the students are identified as receiving special education services. These students can be as young as two years old in the preschool program. That is because WJCC is obligated under the Child Find mandate as per the Code of Virginia, as well as adhering to IDEA regulations from the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act to locate, identify and evaluate children residing in our jurisdiction from birth through age twenty-one, who are in need of special education and related services. Additionally, WJCC coordinates child find activities for infants and toddlers, birth to age two with the Part C Local Agency, CDR, known as Child Development Resources. And now I will turn it over to Mrs. Nelson, the amazing principal of the Bright Beginnings program.
Thank you. Um, one of our key goals in Bright Beginnings is to ensure that every child makes meaningful growth throughout the entire school year. One of our key performance indicators for pre-K students sets the expectation that at least eighty-five percent of students will demonstrate growth in their math skills from fall to spring in the Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Program, um, also known as VKRP. We have a lot of acronyms. Um, as of June twenty-twenty-five, we're thrilled to share that our four-year-old students who were going into kindergarten far exceeded that benchmark. Ninety-seven percent showed growth from fall to spring with an average gain of ninety-seven points. Um, that level of progress is truly remarkable and it reflects the dedication of our teachers and staff as well as all the hard work from our students and the collaboration with their families. Um, so similarly to the VKRP, this is, um, our pre-K literacy data. We are aiming for at least eighty-five percent of our pre-K four-year-olds in Bright Beginnings to show growth in their literacy skills as measured by the Virginia Language and Literacy Screening Assessment, known as VALS, across three score bands defined as beginning, growing and strong. Looking on the left, you can see that a hundred and twenty-eight of a hundred and eighty-three, or seventy percent of the four-year-olds now entering kindergarten are in the growing and strong bands for knowing and developing letter sound skills. It's also important to note that the fifty-five students that are in that beginning band did make growth. They just didn't grow from one band to the next band. Um, the, the amounts do change. Um, on the right, a hundred and forty-seven students, or eighty percent of these same four-year-old students are in the growing and strong bands for syllable segmenting, which was a PD focus for us this past school year. Um, it's a key skill for young children learning to read and it means breaking down words into smaller parts, um, called syllables. This helps children understand how words are put together and it's a beginning, um, literacy skill. I, so the heart of Bright Beginnings isn't just in our classrooms. It's in the stories families share about the growth they see in their children. Um, we pulled some quotes along with others you may have seen on the earlier slides that come directly from our parents and our families, reflecting the impact of our pre-K program um, that they have had on their child's confidence, their learning and their love for school. Their voices remind us why our work matters and how we are truly shaping lifelong learners. Um, I'll pause and give you a second to read over it, but it was my favorite part of putting onto this thing, what, uh, parents and families had to say. Wait, time is hard. As you may recall, during last year's budget, um, discussions, the division prioritized additional supports for the Bright Beginnings program. With the school board's support, we began planning collaboratively and strategically with a student-centered focus and end in mind. We were able to add an additional assistant principal and assigned a school counselor to support the pre-K program. And just in a couple of weeks, I will tell you the, the impact is already being felt. It's been an amazing thing, so thank you for that. It's been an amazing thing, so thank you for that. This slide provides a high-level overview of the recent two-year journey to expand the Bright Beginnings pre-K program. Ultimately, our collective goal is to support, nurture, and grow all of our Bright Beginnings pre-K students so that they enter kindergarten ready to learn and able to meet their maximum potential. Following the award in May 2023, stakeholder meetings were held developing schematic designs, design development, and ending with value engineering. We're thrilled the contract has been awarded and groundbreaking is set for September, and we are excited for an opening start date for students and staff in the fall of 2027. The two pre-K centers will provide space for approximately 500 students, about 250 at each site. We would like to give thanks and recognition for Dr. Kever's leadership over the last two years of this project, as well as the collaboration with Mr. Snipes, Mr. Falzone, and many Bright Beginning staff members and admin that played a part in all the brainstorming and planning. I think you guys have seen this before, but this slide shows the location of the South Campus Pre-K Center that is near Clarebird Baker Elementary. The site is near the front side of the school property by Iron Van Road. This drawing shows the North Campus Pre-K Center near Norwich Elementary, which will be back, built on the backside of the property. And this is a very basic design, but it shows the site plan with the 18 classrooms per building in light blue, and the two pink areas are administration and additional resource areas. The light orange area in the upper middle is the multipurpose space, and on the far left is a small kitchen space where food will get delivered and dropped off.
Madam Chair, that concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you very much. It's, it's very exciting that we're actually moving forward. Mrs. Hunley, did you have a question?
Yes, yes. This presentation makes my heart happy to see the growth of students, and I also, I'm just curious of the five that did not grow, was it an attendance, or is it that their disability was so severe? Like, what resources might we have been missing to help those five students that did not make any growth?
When we look at attendance, it does impact some of our kiddos with lots of disabilities. Do you attend things like ABA and outside? So that does impact a little bit. There also were some kiddos that while they didn't grow in that, they didn't, on a, on a paper, on that score, didn't make it, but if you were to ask that teacher, they would have told you they have grown in how they can communicate or that kind of thing. So I'd have to look deeper to see exactly why, but I do think there was growth, it just doesn't always translate to that score on a paper. Sometimes it can be really hard with those standardized assessments.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board members? I have a question that's from my own curiosity, so if this is not data that you have or track, I totally understand. Do we, do we have any way to show comparison of students who've gone through a Bright Beginnings program and their, their future trajectory compared to students who might have had the same diagnoses who did not go through Bright Beginnings?
So there is, I've worked with Robin Moore a little bit at the, looking at the students that qualify for like a literacy plan that first year when they go into kindergarten. So that is some data that we have started pulling. It is hard because it can, when you, when it gets marked that they didn't attend preschool, it could just be that they didn't attend ours, or they went to Head Start, or they went to a private preschool, or sometimes it's an at-home childcare. So sometimes knowing what the comparison is hard is when I, when we've tried to look at the data, but that is something we can look closer at. And one of the things we had talked with Robin about looking at is seeing our kiddos that have been with us, you know, for two or three years, some of our kiddos started too and continue on, really seeing what is the impact when they get that solid multiple years of preschool going in? Does that lessen their chance of needing a literacy plan or needing intervention right there?
That's what I'm interested in, because I suspect it does, but it would be nice to say we know it does.
Yeah.
So, that's possible someday. Okay, any other? Oh, Dr. Kravas.
To kind of feed on that question that was asked before, what is the, does the, does the VALS assessment give you any prediction? Is there any predictive value in, in that test?
I'm not the expert on that. It, we have, it's four, we have four different, there's multiple different subtests. There's no some score that says, oh, if they're this number, this is where they're at. That's kind of been taken away that isn't in pre-K, but I can see their letter sounds or their letter recognition, or their phoneme blending, or their syllable segmenting, or there's also name writing in some expressive subtests, too. So sometimes it is a little hard to see because they're all broken into separate things. So there's not this, hey, they made this score, this means they're going to be successful completely. We do kind of look at each one. We do focus and try to tie it to the phonemic awareness, which we know is so important in helping our kiddos be able to start that early literacy and beginning to learn to read. So that is kind of why we focus on the syllable segmenting and some of the letter sounds subtests, to kind of guide our focus, our professional development.
Congratulations, thank you.
All right, last chance. All right, I think we're good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now item 6.02, an update on our JROTC application process.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know that over the course of the last several months, certainly since I've been serving as both acting and most hired superintendent, there's been a lot of positive interest in bringing on a JROTC program within WJCC. Ms. Walter has championed that effort and wanted to help ensure that not only the board have an update of where we are, but also want to signal to the community more broadly that we are very interested and anxious to bring on a JROTC program. So Jessica, kick us off, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Kever, and members of the board. It is my pleasure to join you tonight to provide updates on WJCC's pursuit of a JROTC unit. JROTC stands for Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps. The high school program is designed to instill leadership, citizenship, and personal responsibility in all students. JROTC is not a military recruitment program, but is a program with a rich military science curriculum that also expands to students' social awareness and preparedness for life after high school. There are currently JROTC programs in all six branches of the U.S. military. Historically, WJCC has been on various waitlists for JROTC units. In the spring of 2022, WJCC applied for a Coast Guard JROTC unit and learned in January of '23 that we had been put on the waitlist for this opportunity. WJCC will remain active on the Coast Guard JROTC waitlist until 2028, at which time we will need to reapply. While we continue to work towards establishing a JROTC program in WJCC, we have also been reviewing program options available. The JROTC program option that I've discussed here tonight would include a full JROTC unit, which typically requires a minimum enrollment of 100 students. This program is a cost-share option with the military branch, with both the military and the division paying for the costs associated with the program. While exact costs and requirements are branch-specific, this typically requires two instructors in addition to all necessary uniform and equipment costs. In estimations we have received from some of our military partners, WJCC would need to plan for approximately $175,000 in our budget for this option. An additional option that has been under review is the cadet program option. Available through the Navy or the Army, this program mirrors the JROTC program but is fully funded by the local school division. The training requirements for the instructors and the curriculum are the same as the JROTC program without the financial support from the military. Programs who implement this model are typically reviewed higher on the waitlist for a JROTC program as well. In estimations we have received from some of our military partners, WJCC would need to plan for approximately $375,000 to $400,000 in our budget for this option. Additional actions that have been ongoing include the design of the program structure. At this time, WJCC is reviewing the option of housing the JROTC program at one high school and creating structures for all interested students to be able to participate. This would mean developing master schedules with these courses scheduled at times that would support the travel from other schools, as well as creating transportation for students during the school day to participate in the program. Additionally, members of WJCC leadership, including Dr. Kever, Dr. Worley, and myself, have held meetings with the Chief of Army JROTC Operations for the Fourth Brigade, which includes Virginia, to discuss and advocate for an Army JROTC unit in WJCC. With the support of members of our community and school board members reaching out to contacts that they have in various branches, we are continuing to work on meeting with more individuals to advocate for this opportunity. We are thankful for the partnership and support of these members of our community and the time they have taken to help make these valuable introductions. As a final note, we have finalized applications for the Army, Navy, Marine Corps, and Air Force JROTC programs. These applications are currently under review for approval, as some are written as contracts and require additional review prior to submission. Thank you for your time this evening to discuss JROTC, and I welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Walter. Mr. Hosey?
The costs that you provided, is that a yearly cost or is that a startup cost for the School Division?
It's a combination. There's a, sorry, there's an initial fee, which one of our partners kind of gave us as a four-month time, so for us, it would be the same fiscal year and then a full year. So there's some costs, for example, uniforms, that initially would be much larger than the annual maintenance of them, but things such as the FTE cost for the two instructors would of course be much larger and, and, well, a similar amount, but probably get bigger.
Dr. Kravas?
So I understand that the Army application has not been submitted, or has been submitted?
They're all finalized. I submitted them for review internally a couple of weeks ago, so I'm just waiting for feedback. The Army in particular is written as a contract, not an application, so internally, we have different review processes when we're looking at contracts as opposed to an application because there's legal implications that have to be reviewed.
So the answer is?
So it's not in the Army's possession at this time, no. But it is under review.
It will be soon. We want to make sure that we're not, we are, we are submitting for all of them. We want to make sure that we don't submit something without appropriate legal review so as to have a problem down the road in terms of the contract pieces.
Ms. Hunley?
Yes, do the instructors have to be, come through the program, or could we have retired veterans be instructors?
They have to be approved, and they have to go through a mandatory training through the branch. So there are requirements that they lay out that are, that are necessary.
But we could cut some costs if they voluntarily do it after the training.
Oh, that they would work for free?
Yeah.
I don't know how to answer that.
We would bring them on as FTEs, they, they would be our staff and paid a comparable rate to, right now, the rate that we're being quoted from at least the Army side is a rate depending upon where you're structured and the, the government pay scale. So the $175,000 that Ms. Walter mentioned is related to a shared staffing cost where the, the branch of the military picks up 50% of the cost for staff and the school division picks up the other 50%. It would not be a volunteerism opportunity. They would need to be hired as staff members, and that hiring process works in conjunction with our human resources processes, as well as the branch of the military's resources, EHR processes. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Dr. Kravas?
Just one more question. There's a tremendous amount of enthusiasm, but one quick question, do you have any idea as to how many students are actually interested in participating?
I don't have an exact number. I can get you data from a couple of years ago, so for reference, anytime a, a school division in the state of Virginia wants to offer a new CTE course, there is a state requirement and a state application that we have to apply to that for. And part of that application includes a student survey, and when we did a survey two years ago, we included information related to JROTC, as we knew that we were trying to get a unit, and so we could use that. We'd have to do another survey because it's been, it's too old to, for data for an application, but I could go back and get that information for you, just so you know what it was two years ago.
Are you planning on doing another survey soon?
If, if we get approved for a unit, and then we have to, the, the next step would be to apply to the VDOE to offer the JROTC course for the specific branch, and part of that application requirement is a student survey, so yes, we would need to survey our students at that time.
I can tell you anecdotally, Dr. Kravas, that across the, the three surveys that I did in terms of the transition process, that on all three feedback options from both our internal staff, our families, and our students, there was a call for an ROTC option for, for our young people. So while we may potentially struggle to have 101 building, I, I don't think we would necessarily see that struggle across our three schools.
Mr. Ruffel?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Walter, for this presentation. I, this, since we've been kind of working on it, a number of us have discussed with you and other members of our community, like, how long do we like let this call, like, application float out there before we decide potentially host our own cadet program? We know it comes to the cost of like $40,000, but like, there's, clearly, there's a demand from the board supervisors to an extent, they, they reached out to us. I just, I just don't know, like, how long do we let this kind of sit out there and we have opportunities for our students to kind of get educated? Because, you know, it's been like, we haven't had one ever, right? So.
Sure, so there are a handful of barriers that we're trying to work through to obtaining a full JROTC unit, and for awareness, Virginia is considered what's called an oversaturated state for JROTC units, and so when ROTC units are reviewed, they look at the location geographically and then determine if they might need to place a unit somewhere to, where there aren't as many opportunities. So I, I think it very much is a, a cost option that we are not, we're not putting it to the side, but we are trying first to get the full JROTC unit. Certainly, from a fiscal perspective, that would be the benefit for the division, but we also understand that there's a need and desire, so that is still a conversation that we're happening, having, excuse me, having, but I, we haven't quite put a final deadline on when we would make that decision just yet.
I think the other challenge and, and something that we'll work through in the budgeting scenario is we, as we open the budgeting process up in October and then prepare a superintendent's estimate of needs, the first meeting in February is looking at, where are we in an application process? What have, what other types of community partners and supporters have come forward to help potentially facilitate a, a more rapid ascension on the waitlist? I mean, because ultimately, as a saturated state and area, we are going to likely need some additional support beyond those of us in this room in order to get into the full programmatic component. And if that doesn't occur, and the board prioritizes it for, let's say, the '26, '27 school year, that will need to be part of our budgeting process. So I, I think that things will start to really come to fruition here in the next several months as we lay out a plan to move forward with some options and then see which branch of the service really wants to call WJCC home.
I have a question, if, if everyone else is, did you have another question?
Oh, no, I was, I was just going to say, it's my understanding that we have to be picked off the waiting list, so if we're not even on the waiting list, you can't be picked.
That's, that's not incorrect. We will get on the waiting list.
Correct.
The, the saturation of our area is going to necessitate someone helping us or an entity helping us bypass others on the same waitlist.
I completely understand that.
I, so I was going to ask sort of along those lines, is that the, is that, is the oversaturation in the general area the, the only hurdle? I mean, are there other, I know that's the, that's a big one.
I, I would say that's probably the largest hurdle that we're facing.
What are our other hurdles?
Well, we can work out the cost and the transportation and the, but as far as...
I mean, if we're getting chosen.
Verifying interest, which I think we have enough to do, but, but the top that we hear is the oversaturation, so. is the oversaturation, so.
So that, which is not something that we can control, other than connections, potentially?
Correct.
Mr. Riffle?
I think it's, maybe behooves us to maybe potentially look at the legislative agenda to potentially ask the state for funding or to put, like, towards a cadet program. I know that other divisions have those type of divisional budgetary things allotted to them, I looked it up recently in the General Assembly, so we're not unique in that, it's a grant, a word program, so if it's something we're interested in, we could look into, you know, be carrying that for the next year too, so I think no options are off the table. I mean, if the federal government doesn't want to step in, I'm sure the state government wants to kind of chair this workforce-type discussion, and this is a part of it, so.
I will say through multiple conversations that we've had around the community, there is a lot of high-level support, and I think that the Fourth Brigade team that we've talked to recognizes that we are very interested, and there are some members in this community that are very interested in applying the appropriate kinds of interest pressure in order to help keep things moving forward. So I, the submission of the contract or the application is not the, is not the challenge.
No, I'm aware of that. I mean, that's, that's, that's quite doable, but that 147% is not the end number. I mean, we're in that little curve there, it's all, every single state around us is oversaturated, so we're not the only oversaturated state. Every single state around us is over.
Might not be getting new ones too.
What's that?
They might not be getting new programs either.
No, but, but to Dr. Kiefer's point, I mean, it's the sense of enthusiasm and the additional support is what's going to make the difference.
Okay. All right.
We're excited.
When you're done.
Thank you, Ms. Walter.
Thank you.
Item 6.03, Elevate 28 Strategic Plan KPI Update.
Board members, as you might recall, in May and June, our team provided strategic updates on several of the initiatives that we implemented over the course of the year. The purpose of those presentations was to provide a year-end review to celebrate the work collectively that was accomplished relative to our strategic priorities. Tonight, several members of our leadership team will share the 24, 25 quantitative data related to the key performance indicators outlined in our plan. These are the metrics that we previously discussed and were adopted by the Board to measure how well we are doing at achieving our supporting priorities. These indicators not only reflect where we stand today, but also help guide our decisions in terms of continuing to raise the bar over the course of the next three years. In addition to reviewing specific progress performance levels, you'll also hear about some additional strategic initiatives that we will prioritize for the coming school year. These initiatives are designed to enhance safety and security, support and engage our staff and community, and ensure every student has the resources and opportunities to be successful. I am incredibly proud of the work that our team has done, and they continue to maintain a strong focus on what matters most, which is our students' success. With that, I want to turn it over to Ms. Elena Trot, who is our Supervisor of Organizational Development and Strategic Initiatives, to begin the presentation. Elena, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer, Chair Ordigo, and School Board members. Our first update this evening will focus on our fully integrated approach to safety, one that protects the physical environment while also supporting the social, emotional, and mental well-being of our students. There are seven key performance indicators that help us measure this priority. These include data relative to the implementation of safety and security recommendations, network security, student perceptions of belonging, school counseling services, suspension rates, student attendance rates, and participation in the school healthy initiative program. Collaborating on this priority are Mr. Brian Weaver, Mr. Brian Landers, Mrs. Jessica Walter, and Dr. Adam Brown.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Kiefer, and members of the Board. Our first KPI related to safety and security is to fully implement all identified safety recommendations from the 2022 Threat, Risk, Vulnerability Assessment. So far, we have completed 35% of the recommendations, with many others currently in progress nearing completion. Because several of the recommendations are being implemented in phases and can take several years to complete, we anticipate seeing a more substantial increase in this percentage over the next two years. For example, one of the recommendations is related to fencing, and we are currently 85% complete towards that effort, so that is not reflected in the 35% completion rates you see here. We will continue our progress this year by installing additional bollards and fencing, signage on school properties, and new speed bumps in school parking lots. These updates combined with staff training on reunification process and feedback on drills will enhance our safety processes across all campuses.
KP, excuse me, KPI 2.2 is related to network security. Our aim is always to prevent any attempted data breaches. Annual system updates, patching, and proactive monitoring ensure that our digital infrastructure remains protected, keeping both staff and student data safe. Last year, cybersecurity incident provided us with valuable data for enhancing our security posture, and we will finish implementing those recommendations this school year.
Our goal for KPI 2.3 is to ensure school counselors spend the majority of their day providing direct services to our students. To capture this data, school counselors enter their daily activities into a platform called SCUDA. Our baseline for this indicator was 77.8%, and last school year, the average was 79%. Our goal is to reach 80% or greater. Additionally, last year, we started collecting data on the number of students served through small group counseling sessions. For the 24, 25 school year, 1,040 students participated in small groups across the division. Small group counseling enables school counselors to address the diverse needs of students by providing targeted support in a collaborative setting. This programmatic approach allows counselors to deliver direct counseling services to multiple students simultaneously while fostering a sense of community among those navigating similar life challenges. Through shared experiences and guided discussions, students gain skills, strategies, and confidence to thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. Our school counselors offer meaningful supports to foster student well-being. This year, we have enhanced our programs by adding a new counselor at Bright Beginnings, creating a counseling chair position in our high schools, and streamlining tiered behavioral health supports across all schools. We are also continuing to increase small group counseling opportunities so students can access personalized support at every level.
KPI, excuse me, KPI 2.4 monitors the percentage of behavioral referrals that result in a student's suspension from school. This year's data indicates a 24% suspension rate, which is consistent with the baseline rate. While we did see some slight reductions in key areas, we remain committed to strengthening our programming and supports that help students stay in school, balanced with our responsibility to maintain a safe learning environment for everyone. With our commitment to reducing the use of out-of-school suspension by 2%, we are launching a Canvas Hub with Behavior Resources and Professional Development. We have revised our Code of Conduct to include the development of targeted action plans for students who are demonstrating a lack of response to targeted interventions, and we're offering a Family Academy session on supports for students with behavioral challenges, and will continue to engage in ongoing dialogue through employee and student focus groups to help guide our work. KPI 2.5 has two indicators. The first is related to the average daily attendance percentage, and the second is related to the percentage of students identified as chronically absent. Our target is 95% daily attendance rates and a 3% decrease in chronic absenteeism by 2, by 2028. I'm happy to report that we've made gains on both indicators last school year. This year, we continue our efforts by holding two multidisciplinary team meetings each month, creating personalized attendance improvement plans in synergy to better monitor and inform our efforts, and scheduling beginning-of-year conferences for students who were identified as chronically absent last year. Our attendance specialists will also provide tailored supports to our elementary schools with the highest needs. KPI 2.6 seeks to measure student perceptions of our learning environment. We want students to feel heard, supported, and belonging. Our goal is for 90% of students to affirm that their school provides a safe, healthy, and well-maintained, along with a positive environment. Data for this KPI is collected through the Elevate 28 Stakeholder Survey, which was conducted last fall and will open again later next month. Statements from the survey that measure students' perceptions included, "I feel safe at school", "my school is well-maintained", and "overall, my school is a good place for learning". The percentages shown here represent those who rated these statements as "four", "agree", or "five strongly agree". Our goal is for 90% of our students to affirm that their school provides a safe and positive environment. To achieve this, we are continuing the Student Voices Tour, creating new opportunities for student leadership, and amplifying student perspectives through panel discussions and student-led professional learning for staff. Finally, KPI 2.7 seeks to ensure that 95% of our elementary students participate in a SHIP-sponsored classroom activity. This is the first year that data for this specific indicator was collected, and we're pleased to report that our baseline is now 91%. The data collection process has been helpful in revealing specific gaps in our programming specifically related to students served in our self-contained classrooms. To address this opportunity, the SHIP staff is currently assessing the current lesson materials and collaborating with special education team members to adapt program offerings to meet these students' needs. And before we move to the next part, we're happy to pause to see if there's any questions related to the priority at this time.
Okay, thank you for that. Ms. Henley, it looked like you had a question?
Yes, and I, I would think, I think this one would be for Mr. Weaver. You're sitting over there, so.
Medical chairs.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to stay there or go there. Okay. So I'm not sure if this happens to my fellow board meetings, but, members, but whenever there's a school shooting, my cellphone blows up, and the first question parents are asking is, are our schools safe? You know, when you see 35%, we still need to work towards things, there may be some anxiety, and this may happen, but I'm not sure. Do we send out a letter, kind of, when something like that happens, just reminding parents, "your children are safe, we have resource officers, we have maybe policemen roaming the schools"? Do we send anything out like that to calm people's anxieties when school shootings happen?
Are you talking about nationally, Ms. Henley?
Yes, because the copycat, they worry about copycat people.
Right.
And I understand that situation was not, it was random, different, but my phone, people, when that happens, regardless, parents want to know if their kids are safe.
Sure.
And I say yes, but I just would, it would be nice if something went out, just reminding them, because a lot of parents worry.
I, I totally understand that. I think that recently, when there have been specific school shooting incidents, not in the local area, we have not necessarily shared information broadly with our community. We do try, on a fairly regular basis, to remind families and students and staff of the safety measures in place, and that we feel like our campuses are particularly safe and secure. If, if, and let's hope it doesn't happen anytime soon, but if there is another instance, we can certainly talk about whether or not it's the right time for us to remind folks. Usually with some of our back-to-school information, we shared information around the Standard Response Protocol and the things that we've put in place to help students and families know what our different processes are, but we can, we can continue to explore that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for this first portion of the presentation? I have a question about, on Slide 9, the student behavior focus areas. I know we are, I know we're working on the updates for the Code of Conduct that make it, writing more summary-type explanations of behaviors and consequences versus a bunch of legalese, correct, to make it clearer?
Yes, and that came through the June updates to the Code of Conduct, so those changes have already happened.
Okay. The Family Academy for students with behavioral challenges, is that, is that something that occurs on a regular basis, or is that just one Family Academy is going to happen to be this topic?
I think for right now, we're planning for one during Semester One, and then seeking feedback and see if something is beneficial to continue in some capacity.
The Family Academies, how well are they generally attended? Does it really, is it very great, vastly based on topic, or is it pretty steady?
Yes, both. It depends on topic, it depends on, we've, we've been monitoring time of day in person versus virtual attendance. We had a very successful Lunch and Learn series this past spring, so trying to replicate that success and also meeting families where they are and when they're available for the topics that they're interested in. Also, the, I shouldn't say all, but the majority of our Family Academies are recorded and available online, so if a family isn't able to access it at the time that it's offered live, they would be able to access it at a later time at their convenience, and of course, submit, you know, call, email with any questions following up on that topic.
Does that happen?
Occasionally.
Occasionally.
I do think it's a goal with this Family Academy to highlight resources available in the community as well, so it's how do you provide support to a child, even if they're struggling in the house, because the feedback we get often is they're not sure where to turn to, so providing those resources, I think, and access at a later time is important.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, any other questions before we move on in the presentation?
The aim of our Human Capital and Positive Culture Supporting Priority is to recruit and retain an exemplary workforce by creating an environment where transparency and trust are the norm. There are five key performance indicators that help us measure this priority, including the percentage of personnel hired by the first day of school, annual employee retention rates, our salary ranking compared to neighboring divisions, employee perceptions of WJCC being a supportive work environment, and professional learning opportunities. Mr. Tim Baker will now share some updates related to this priority.
Good evening. Our goal is always to be 100% staff. To begin the 2025, 2026 school year, we were six and a half teachers short, or 99.4% staff for classroom teachers. While our teachers are a critical focus of our workforce, we are also extremely well-staffed for the support positions at 94.9%, and we were 100% staffed for administrators. Note that our support employee fill rate is the highest it's been in the past three years. We want our employees to grow and be supported in their careers and to maintain a commitment to WJCC. Begin this school year, we retained 85.4% of our teachers and 81.7% of our support staff and 95.8% of our administrators. These are all increases from our previous year's retention rate. By June 2028, our goal is for WJCC to lead the region in salaries for teachers, support staff, and administrators. Competitive pay is critical, because when you invest in our people, we invest directly into our students' success. We have made progress, we know there's more work to do. Right now, our teachers rank fourth out of six, of the six divisions in starting salary, and our support staff, which includes bus drivers, custodians, cafeteria workers, and teacher assistants, rank second in the region, and our administrators are third out of six, three out of six. These numbers remind us why this goal matters. To attract and retrain the very best talent at every level, we must continue to move forward so that WJCC is not just competitive, but the clear leader in our region. This year, we will seek to implement the second year of the Compensation Study Recommendations and launch a STIPEN Review Study to reevaluate the pay rates of these supplemental roles. We will continue to highlight the enhancements of our employee benefits package, including access to online portals, benefits counseling, and wellness initiatives. In the area of recruitment, we've scheduled three job fairs, including a VIP teacher event where we will invite top-tier teacher candidates to attend a meet-and-greet with our principals, and a Saturday job fair in March, and we also host our third Alternative Pathways Information Night in February, for those interested in entering the profession through non-traditional routes. These efforts will help us attract and retain the highly qualified employees that our students deserve.
KPI 3.4 measures employee perceptions of WJCC public schools being a supportive work environment. Data for this KPI is collected through the Elevate 28 Stakeholder Survey, which was conducted last fall and will be open again next month. Statements from the survey that measure employee perceptions included, "the administrators in this school care about staff well-being", "I feel supported by teachers and staff in this school", and "overall, my school is a good place to work and a good place for learning". The percentages shown here represent those who rated these statements as a "four", "agree", or a "five strongly agree", and a combined average of 91% meeting the target for this KPI. Our theme for this year, United in Purpose and Inspired by Possibilities, speaks to our collective work and commitment to re-envisioning excellence for our students. Our back-to-school kickoff event held... Our back-to-school kickoff event held during pre-service week was a great opportunity for employees from across the division to celebrate our accomplishments and refocus our energy for the year ahead. Additionally, Dr. Kiefer visited each school during pre-service as part of his Listening Sessions Tour. During those sessions, he asked employees to identify what's most pressing, what's missing, and what's next, as we forge a new path forward. We also plan to host two new employee focus groups this year, one specific to professional learning and one specific to staff well-being and mental health. We are making enhancements to our employee recognition programs and seeking opportunities for staff to connect with each other through community interest groups and various appreciation events. KPI three point five measures employee participation in meaningful professional growth opportunities, and we're pleased to share that in our first year of data collection, we have exceeded our goal of ninety-five percent, with ninety-six point one percent of our team members engaging in professional development related to their work. To help us reach one hundred percent, we are working to fill opportunity gaps for specific employee groups. This year's professional learning offerings will intentionally extend beyond instructional staff to administrative assistants, substitutes, and operational team members. We'll also enhance our launch program for new teachers by providing alternative licensure advising and year-two teacher supports. Additional differentiation will be provided to our veteran educators through teacher leadership workshops and coaching clinics. We'll be happy to pause to see if there are any questions related to the human capital and positive culture supporting priority at this time.
Mrs. Donner?
Going back to slide twenty and where we rank in terms of salaries, so it looks like we were in the middle of the pack in twenty-three, twenty-four, and then have kind of slid to four and stayed there on the bachelors. Well, our compensation, so what is the, with the compensation study for year one that still has us at four, what would the subsequent compensation studies move us towards?
I think that, that's difficult to answer on the fly, because the other, the other divisions are also moving to the right at the similar time. I feel like our, our efforts when year, in year one of the compensation study, really look to address years ten through twenty-three, twenty-four. And so, that was the focal point. As we get ready to get back into the budgeting season, we have talked within human resources and finances around ensuring that recommendations for year two and three are still exactly what they were as we talked about last year, or do we need to revisit some of those recommendations? So, at the outset, I'm a little, a little hesitant to say year two of the comp study will accelerate us for entry-level bachelors or move us from this position to that position. The other challenge I think sometimes we have is related to the amount of compensation added at the state level, and then what we can, what we are able to do either above and beyond that, or what have you. So there are a couple of different pieces to that puzzle. You're welcome.
I was actually going to ask a similar question, I don't know if it's the same question. If we had, if we had been able to implement the entire comp study recommendation in one year, would that have changed our rankings? I know it's hypothetical.
It's a little, it's a little bit of a challenge in that we, our, our average teacher increase was over four, four and a half percent. And the, the three percent coming from the state is what most other locales did. So I, I think that would have had an additional positive impact, yes, because it was additional monies going towards salaries that other divisions were not utilizing. Part, part of the nuance really becomes, what's the percentage that comes from the state? Are we meeting that across the board and then accelerating with comp study year two and year three? Or are we going above and beyond what's happening at the state level and adding to it in terms of the comp study? So I, if we had done the full three years in one time, it would have had a net positive impact and pushed us forward, because other people weren't in that realm. Other, other divisions weren't in that realm.
Right. Just had another question. I literally just, just flew out of my mind. Anyway, I'll think about it, but I also, if there are other questions pertaining to this particular topic, let me know. I'm also surveying the group to see if you'd like to make a pot, like a brief recess now, mid, we're halfway through this presentation, so we can do the second half and then policies. Would that work, or would you rather power through? Call it a brief recess. Okay, we're going to take five minutes, and we will reconvene.
We are about to continue with our KPI update. Right before we called a recess, I did have a question that left me and I just want to ask it because it came to me three minutes, I mean, three seconds after we went off the air. It also pertains to the slide that Ms. Donner asked about with Slide 20, Human Capital and the Rankings. And I had, in the break, talked to Dr. Keever and said, is there a way to capture where we are with the specific group that we targeted? Because we did put a relatively large investment for, you know, for the first year. And we targeted, was it 10 to 20 years?
I feel like it was 10 to 22, 23, but we-
Because we had recognized that that's where we were kind of seeing an attrition rate that was hurting us. And it would be, if it's possible, to see how that compares to other divisions at some point.
Yes, ma'am. We'll get that for you.
Okay, thank you. All right. We are now ready to move on. Okay. The aim of our Communications and Engagement Supporting Priority is to cultivate a culture of open and effective communication to inform and engage all stakeholders. There are four key performance indicators that help us measure this priority, including the number of communications that highlight student and staff success, and division news, family participation in division-sponsored events, volunteer participation in community partnerships. Mrs. Cara Wall will now share updates related to this priority.
Good evening. This indicator reflects the number of communications we share, including newsletters, press releases, website stories, and social media posts. Each item aims to celebrate student and staff success or share important school division news. Our year-over-year growth reflects not only the efforts of the communications team, but also the support of school leaders and staff who are actively sharing stories from their classrooms and buildings. While we're ahead of the 15% growth target set for 2028, we will use this momentum to further refine our storytelling, enhance transparency, and engage our community in the success of our students and schools to sustain this level of output. Our colleagues across the school division play a large part in the success of this KPI. In this summer, we launched an internal tool to make it even easier for staff to share their celebrations, send a shout-out to a colleague, or get support in promoting an upcoming event. Comms Connect is a revamped tool on our Intranet to streamline story sharing and storytelling. As an added incentive, staff members receive Teacher Supply Shop bucks for every submission they make. Last month, we tallied our fifth printed community newsletter delivered to each residential mailbox in the division. In it, we launched a sign-up for The Loop, our new community e-newsletter that will debut later this month. This will serve as another vehicle to share and celebrate with our community members that may not otherwise have a direct connection with our schools. Finally, the Staff Focus Group convened this spring, offered several recommendations to support internal communications, and the implementation of those recommendations is ongoing. We saw growth in attendance at engagement events we hosted, primarily driven by our kindergarten registration Family Fest in April. And while aggregated participant satisfaction dipped slightly across our events over the year, we're still pleased to report that nearly all attendees received content and resources that meet their expectations. While we know volunteers regularly support our classrooms, school, and division initiatives, to this point, we have not formalized a data collection process to tally volunteers' impact in totality. Through the Raptor Visitor Management Tool that is already in use at all schools, we are finalizing a way to capture data of those individuals who are already visiting and supporting our schools without placing an additional administrative burden on school staff to aggregate such data. We'll roll out this, we'll roll this out in late fall or early winter, and we'll be able to extrapolate the partial year data this year for baseline purposes. Similarly, we are fortunate to have a tremendous circle of businesses and community organizations that embrace and uplift our students, teachers, and schools. It was important to identify a shared definition of partnership in the 23-24 school year so we can identify partners with consistency and fidelity from the division, school, and classroom perspectives. We define a partnership as an individual or individuals representing a business or organization that provides time, resources, products, or exclusive opportunities to the WJCC School's community beyond standard business transactions or contractual agreements. The engagement may be one-time, for example, serving in mock interviews or hosting a vaccination clinic, or an ongoing program. If an individual is not representing a business or an organization, they're considered a volunteer. With that definition in mind, we're proud of and grateful for the 64 organizations who helped make a difference in our students' lives. Our engagement work will be significant this year, starting later this month with Dr. Keever's Community Connection Series. In addition to events we coordinate, we're also expanding our presence at existing community events or meetings. As I had alluded to earlier, we look forward to offering a menu of family academies that are responsive to topics families request and are available at times that are convenient for them to engage. This year is the first where we have a family and community engagement liaison stipend at each school. The individuals in these roles will support the exchange and support of volunteers and partners, but also help ensure the programs we offer meet the needs of families, both at the school level and division-wide. And as Mrs. Hunley and Mr. Kelly have shared, the WJCC Schools Foundation marks its 10th anniversary this fall with an event on October 9th, an evening on the lawn. Through the foundation, we have yet another pathway to engage our community and celebrate our students, staff, and schools. And we'll be happy to pause for any questions on this area.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Any questions from board members? Mr. Riffle?
Kind of like more joking, Ms. Wall, how will you keep doing better? There's so much- It's a lot of posts. We talked about this last year, but it's really, a lot of my neighbors and people talk about the social media presence and marketing you all have done, and especially the newsletter that comes home. Back to my HOAs exclusively, more older people in the neighborhood, they really do appreciate hearing from our school division that way, so thank you. They said our picture was not very good, the school board picture, so.
Can try again for the next edition.
That's what a lot of people told. Apple's like, "Thank you very much."
Any other questions? All right, thank you. The aim of our organizational efficiency and effectiveness supporting priority is to optimize division effectiveness and efficiency by establishing and strengthening processes and systems. There are seven key performance indicators that help us measure this priority, including the percentage of budget reversion funds, the number of vendors who are paid electronically, the percentage of capital improvement projects completed on time and within budget, the mean time to repair maintenance work orders, our bus on-time rate, the average time that our network is accessible and operational, and the average repair time for all division-issued computing devices. Mrs. Renee Ewing, Mr. Marcellus Snipes, and Mr. Brian Landers will now share updates related to this priority.
Our financial goal remains to keep budget reversion at or below 2.5% annually, ensuring that funds are directed where they are most needed. As shared earlier this evening, we improved our percentage of reversion funds by 2.6% from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25. KPI 5.2 focuses on transitioning toward 100% electronic vendor payments by 2028. In 2024, we piloted this new process with a few of our vendors, and we are pleased to report that 64% of all eligible vendors are now paid electronically. To continue our progress towards our budget and finance KPIs, this year, we are enhancing our budget process and timeline to increase communication with our funding partners and alignment with division priorities. Second, we are establishing a healthcare reserve fund. This will provide greater stability and help us prepare for fluctuations in healthcare costs. Third, we are creating a dedicated textbook fund to ensure that instructional materials are updated and available when needed without competing with other budget priorities. And finally, we will continue our new standard operating procedures for requiring vendors to authorize direct deposit. This streamlines payments, reduces processing time, and increases efficiency.
KPI 5.3 measures the timeliness and stewardship of our capital improvement projects. I'm pleased to share that 100% of our CIP projects were completed on time and 92% did not exceed 10% of the allocated budget. These are double-digit improvements from our baseline year. KPI 5.4 focuses on mean time to repair maintenance work orders. Because the type of assets being repaired vary, the time we receive parts is depending on supply chains, and some work orders require the use of external contractors. There is no industry standard for mean time repair. However, our operations team is striving and efforting to ensure maintenance response times are at or below seven days, ensuring that building issues are resolved quickly and learning environments remain safe and functional. As you can see, our initial baseline is 12.82 days. And for the 2024-25 school year, we reduced it to 11.14 days, which is a reduction of 1.68 days. KPI 5.5 measures the percentage of buses that arrive no later than 10 minutes after the school's dismissal time. Last year, our on-time rate for buses reduced by 3% as we experienced a reduction in drivers. However, we did see an increase from 79% in September 2024 to 81% by June of 2025. On-time rates are impacted by driver vacancies, breakdowns, accidents, incidents, bell times, et cetera. An increase in the number of drivers from 86 drivers to 96 drivers attributed to this improvement. We believe additional drivers hired at the beginning of the school year will assist in the on-time rate for our buses. Capital improvement projects for this school year included new construction on our two preschool centers, freezer replacements at Norwich and Berkeley, a cafeteria expansion at Jamestown, Phase 1 of the HVAC replacement at Matthew Whaley, a dehumidification project at Clarabelle Baker, division-wide brickwork and paving projects, and additional accessibility upgrades for playgrounds. Bus reliability is also improving, as mentioned earlier. Thanks to stronger recruitment, we've increased the driver approval from 86 to 98 this year, giving us greater capacity to maintain our 90% on-time performance rate. In addition, we have 10 drivers in training.
Makes me happy that we could be at 108, Mr. Snipes.
Can that be attributed at all to Ms. Hunley's toy school bus?
KPI 5.6 measures the average time the network is accessible and operational. Our technology infrastructure continues to perform at a high standard with a 99.87% uptime across the division, ensuring reliable access to digital learning and operations. KPI 5.7 monitors the average repair time for all division-issued computing devices. Last school year, we were able to reduce that time from 5.2 days to 4.9 days, bringing us within the five-day target for this KPI. Our information technology focus areas for this school year will include a system-wide Windows 11 upgrade on approximately 13,000 devices, replacing over 700 wireless access points across the division to enhance network connections, implementing multi-factor authentication for external connections to enhance our security posture, piloting a study on student screen time in elementary classrooms, which is currently scheduled to start in the second marking period, and a data center redundancy project between Hornsby and Warhill to improve failover capabilities during incidents such as fiber cuts, which will continue to strengthen our reliability. We'll be happy to pause here to see if there are any questions related to our priority at this time.
Ms. Donner?
I have two questions. My first is for you, Ms. Landers. What does a, what does a screen time analysis mean?
So, there's been a heightened interest in what are our students actually doing on their devices and for how long of a period of time during the instructional, excuse me, during the instructional day? So, that's what this is going to take a look at. The screen time analysis is how long are they on their screen? What are they doing? Are they just doing an electronic version of a worksheet? Or are they actively engaged in using the device for higher-level learning? What are they doing at any given time during the day?
Right, thank you. And then my other question is from Mr. Snipes. I was just curious-
Ms. Donner, use your mic, please. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I was curious with the, with the, with our repairs. As things change, and are we concerned about availability of parts or things as there are kind of tariffs and geopolitical things that impact our ability to get the parts and things that we need?
You are correct. There are multiple things that impact our ability to receive parts as well as on our projects. They could be, it could be impacted by tariffs, of course, but it also could be impacted by our driver shortages from getting your products from one, from one location to another. So, yeah, there are concerns. Specifically, this year, we were behind on a project because we couldn't get some things in on time.
Thank you.
I will also mention, Ms. Donner, that part of the rationale in the last budgeting process for us to bring forward, in essence, two additional positions in the operations realm in terms of training some folks up in the trades, was that the part of our repair cycle is personnel-generated. So, if we can get the parts and we don't have to use an outside contractor, do we have the staff that can help us there? So, you may see as we begin the budgeting process again, is there a way for us to continue to work on that through additional staff?
Thank you. That was a position we cut.
Those, we cut two. We actually had two in the budget, and they were, in essence, specialist positions where we would bring people on at a base level and train them up to be able to serve maybe in a couple different roles for us.
Thank you.
Mr. Riffle, did you have a hand? No? Any other questions at this juncture? Okay, this concludes the strategic updates for our supporting priorities. We look forward to sharing updates on our key priority of academic achievement, college and career readiness, and educational equity with you on October 7th. So, thank you. I have one final question. How much of this will be reflected on our dashboard?
It's a great question. We are in, we have worked with Hanover to develop information graphics to be able to post online for our community. The initial idea is to post the information, the infographics, and then in additional years be able to have data relative to a dashboard that can be manipulated, that some of this, because it was initially baseline, will be more static, and we will show graphically what the data represents from '23-24 to '24-25. And then in '25-26, with the addition of the data, it can be more of an interface. So, our intent is to load onto our website infographics for each of the different supporting priority areas. I'm hopeful, and maybe by the close of this week, not into early next.
Okay. So, that is the plan, so that when we present something like this, then it, it, in essence, the content of this presentation should be reflected on some level on our dashboard-
Correct. I mean-
-for the community to go back and see.
At a minimum, we could publish a PDF file of this data, but our goal is to have information graphics for each of the supporting priorities.
We received mock-ups already. We provided feedback and are just waiting for the final edits to be returned. Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Traut. Thank you, team, for putting that together.
Yeah, thank you. That was a lot. Okay, back to my agenda.
Madam Chair, this is the part of the meeting that everybody's been waiting for with respect to policies.
Right, this is your moment to find-
The first, the first policy that we're going over this evening, 7.01, is the review, the creation of policy IGBJ, Advanced Mathematics or Accelerated Mathematics. This policy is a new policy that we're creating, and you'll note that typically, we don't like to create additional policies because it goes into the five-year review forecast. In this case, it was related to a state code provision and the addition of state code that we actually had to bring a policy on indicating our process as a school division for the enrollment of students into advanced or accelerated math in grades 5 through 8 based on SOL test results. There is an opt-out provision that allows for parents that don't want their students accelerated into math classes to be able to opt out from that. But this policy is a requirement for us to add, and you'll see the language in lines 1 through 46. They're brand-new. The policy language aligns with the VSBA model that was provided in May of '25.
Are there any questions from board members on this new policy? All right.
The next item is 702, reviewing revisions to Policy GA, which is our WJCC Employee Conduct Policy. There are two specific additions that we are seeking to add to this particular policy. One is related and starts on line 57. It's related to confidential information. I think it is important for us, both administratively, to state and then to signal to employees that from time to time, you may obtain or come in contact with confidential information, and it is incumbent upon you not to disclose any of such information. And we needed to be pretty specific with staff around that. Additionally, with some code provisions at the state level, it was important for us to delineate the idea in Item C around staff weapons in schools. Not that we would ever encourage staff to have weapons in schools, but that there are specific times where that might be feasible, i.e., if we move to a school security officer scenario where those school security officers could potentially have a weapon, it would be something that we would need to have policy language around. You'll see that in lines 78 through 80.
Questions? No? Doesn't look like it.
The next one is the staff hiring procedures. We wanted to update Policy GBN to include the responsibility of the applicant to furnish accurate information and/or to ensure that he or she was not omitting any pertinent information on their application. So, we added that language into the policy recommendation.
Okay.
GCBA, which is Agenda Item 7.04. This particular, the language of the policy is not changing. We are changing a cross-reference. You may recall, as a result of the compensation study, we moved to a unified salary schedule, not an administrator and support scale, and we needed to change the cross-reference. Student Athlete Concussion, 7.05. This is one of three policies that is to be reviewed every two years. There are no content changes being recommended. There is the addition of, if there are additions, and additions will be made to the actual regulation. In this case, you are acknowledging that you've reviewed this policy, and it is aligned with the appropriate code.
Okay.
Same thing holds true for JJAF, Student Athlete Sudden Cardiac Arrest. The one piece that I will add is that we've updated the cross-reference to include a new regulation which delineates specifically our process. That process is spelled out in our Coach's Handbook, but we also want to be sure that there is a forward-facing regulation for folks to have access to should they need it.
All right.
And then finally, in terms of this batch, JJAH, Student Athlete Sudden Heat Illness Prevention. Again, we're adding a cross-reference to regulatory language. Typically, it's been handled or covered in our Coach's Handbook, but there will be a regulation that corresponds as well.
Okay.
EBB, which is 7.08. Details Threat Assessment Teams. The following areas have been added to the policy based on legislative requirements. I, specifically, the superintendent or designee must provide materials on recognition of and strategies for responding to behaviors when there is an indication that a student poses a threat of violence or self-harm. And that communication needs to go to the parents of the student. So, you'll see that in lines 27 through lines 40.
Any questions or thoughts on this from board members? No, not seeing any.
Policy EBBA, First Aid CPR for Certified Personnel. This was last revised in April of 2022. The following areas have been added to the policy based on new legislative requirements. Each school with an athletic emergency action plan or cardiac emergency response plan must have appropriate staff trained in first aid CPR and the use of AED machines. And at least one employee in each school is authorized and trained and certified to administer an opioid antagonist and able to access that antagonist during school hours. Relative to the AED machines, one of the gaps that we have uncovered and tried to address was at our middle school athletic practices, the need to have a portable AED machine that goes out with coaches in the event that there's not an athletic trainer on-site carrying that. So, those were purchased utilizing funds last year, and they are in place now at schools.
Any questions from board members? Doctor, anything?
No. I just have one, I mean, I was gonna, I wasn't gonna ask. Earlier, when you said that there are symptoms that could present as a cardiac event, I mean, that's kind of vague. It needs to be more specific or what, but that's- Needs to be more specific or, or what, but that's, we've already gone past that one. It just occurred to me, I was reading it as you were.
Okay, so if you, if you had thoughts on JJAF, if, if you would let me know, I'll, I'll make sure that they're addressed or if it, if, it might be more general in the policy, but the regulation itself and what's in the Coach's Handbook is generally pretty specific.
Okay, good.
Does that make sense? Does that help?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Seven-ten is IGBA, Individualized Education Programs for Students with Disabilities. The following areas have been added to the policy based on new legislative requirements. One of those requirements is around post-secondary planning and support services. It requires IEP teams to address student transition goals and identify necessary support services. Another area, and it's an area that we've actually talked about, I think in, in a boardwork session or certainly during a, a school safety committee discussion, is around IEP teams including supports and accommodations for students during emergency situations and evacuations. The, the need to address that within the IEP. And then finally, the requirement that parents are notified of dual enrollment opportunities. IEP teams must ensure that parents are informed of a student's rights and obligations related to accessing dual enrollment programs.
All right, are we good, everyone? Good to move on?
Seven point eleven, revisions to the Code of Student Conduct. Generally, you will review the student code of conduct and approve that in May and June. There have been, there is the need to add specific language clarifying bell-to-bell as a result of legislation that occurred last year to codify the Governor's Executive Order around cellphone-free instruction. The, the bell-to-bell designation laid out in JFC does not change any of our processes. We are, were in line with the expectation, but this language is meant to ensure that, that, that the student code of conduct aligns with the legislation. It also prohibits the suspension directly related to the use of cellphones, which was also a part of the legislation. And then the other piece that was added to this particular policy was related to oversight of cyberbullying investigations and the specific supports required by school divisions.
Mr. Ossing?
So, in relation to this, a, a student could have multiple cellphone issues, violations, and not be suspended or expelled.
Well, it, it.
With, if that's solely what the stu-, I, I know it says here if there's other issues that could be combined with it, that may be, that may be grounds for suspension, but just strictly they, they continue to have their cellphone out, using it, whatever, that's not a basis, no matter how many times that they violate that policy.
That, that is the way the legislation was worded, and so that's the way it's in our, our Code of Student Conduct. I don't know, Adam, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but can you give me, can you give us a sense of students that might have had multiple violations like that that did not lead to additional disciplinary consequences?
I can speak to, without the specific number, but I can speak to students that did receive suspensions related to cellphones, where students who refused to put them away and were creating a disturbance in the learning environment. Additionally, if there is a student who was directed to turn in their cellphone after the third offense and refused to do, to do so and walk past administration, that no longer is a cellphone violation. That's a refusal to respond to administrative action or directives. And so, I think it's important in those situations where the students are being defiant or refusing to follow administrative directions, it's no longer a student just mistakenly brought their cellphone a third time. It was, they were openly defiant, refusing to follow administrative directions, and that could be considered for suspension in that specific instance. I think the protection in the legislation was, they wanted to ensure that students forgetting their cellphone or forgot to put in the locker in some divisions, that was in directly ties with a suspension. But I, I think we saw instances last year where students were being suspended because it was not really a cellphone issue, it was a disruption to the learning environment or defiance issue.
Does that make sense, Mr. Ossing? Is that answer?
It makes sense. I, I ju-, I can just see a student continuously violating just the cellphone policy and knowing that nothing's gonna happen to him. And that's, that's a concern.
Point that crosses another line.
Does, and, and then it, it, what's it, the fifth violation, you've got, you cannot bring it, you're not allowed to bring it?
The, the, the third violation is, is a progressive model, but the third, you have to turn it in at the beginning of the day. And the fourth one is you're not permitted to bring it in. So, at that point, the student has received a clear directive as they would with anything related to school expectations, and their inability to follow that no longer becomes a cellphone concern. It's a school directive concern.
Mr. Riffle?
I'm gonna jump to the cyberbullying part. Can you just kind of walk us through like exactly what's changed? It does seem, it's, it's similar in reading, it's just kind of the flow is different. I just want to make sure that I'm missing, I, I actually was there unless this was read, but it still was confusing of what the governor and the generals would be agreed to.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm gonna let Dr. Brown talk about what, what has expanded here, but I will tell you that from the perspective that I have as superintendent, this creates additional administrative responsibility at the school level for things that are not having an impact at the school level, frankly. So, let me let Adam talk to you a little bit about it, and then we can answer more questions if necessary.
So, I, I think the increased responsibility for a school administrative team is, is any report of cyberbullying, whether or not it's impacting the learning environment, needs to be investigated. And so, even in situations where it's two students and there's some type of issue outside the school environment, we determine there's not an impact to the learning environment. Before this change, we have not investigated those. We will talk with the students, provide supportive measures, but if we don't have jurisdiction per se in this update, any complaint or allegation of cyberbullying, we must investigate, even if it's over the summer or anything along those lines. Even if we cannot institute some level of disciplinary action, we must address, investigate, and provide supportive measures.
So, it went from us not having any grounds to investigate, went to off-school property, so us having full, complete ability to investigate, and then we have.
A responsibility to, in fact.
Yeah.
Right, without, I, I don't believe there was additional support relative to SOQs for additional administrators.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, thank you for bringing it up.
Yes, sir.
It's the point at which I think the rubber meets the road if the state doesn't understand exactly what they're asking for here. And I think there was a disagreement between the letter sizes in one body and, and the agreement of two. A, a governor just wanted to see this, make it somewhat better for divisions. And I think it did make it that, that mark. So, hopefully, we can see revisions in this. If, if there's any similar type of, I'm sure the VSBA may take this out, but it is, is a pretty big burden to have because there's a lot of lawsuits that could come from this.
Right, and I think we, we think cyberbullying is wrong.
Right.
And absolutely, we don't want any of our students to be cyberbullied, whether it's something that we can have an impact on or not. But if, if we're responsible for investigating things that are occurring that don't have an impact on the school or school operations, I, I think that's taken us down a path where if we want administrators visiting classrooms and talking with teachers about instruction and talking about how to improve the learning environment on a day-to-day basis around instruction, that researching a cyberbullying issue that occurred in the neighborhood that has no impact on the school deters from that, and that, that's a concern that I have.
Does, um, does this, um, does any part of it have to be brought to, to a school, a member of the school personnel or administrator? Because how are you gonna know what's happening over this summer if no one tells, brings it to you? Does it, does it have to be brought to a school? And then is there also some element of informing parents? Because that might, that might be helpful.
Yeah, so we, we, any type of allegation related to bullying has to be notified to parents, whether it's the person being alleged to be in the bully or the alleged victim within twenty-four hours.
Right.
We have an online submission that they can go through the website, but it could also be contacting who's at the school over the summer. But we also receive inquiries with the online submission portal as well.
So, there is something that is brought to, to the school's attention?
We, we don't, right, we don't necessarily go looking for it, right, but.
You don't have a responsibility for anything that.
Correct. It, it doesn't matter, I guess now it doesn't matter whether that instance has had an impact on daily school operations. Whereas before, I could look at it administratively and say, that's having an impact because two students are having a difficult time.
Sitting in the same room.
Sitting in the same room. Whereas now, it could be totally non-affiliated with things that are occurring in the school, but it involves students whereby we have a responsibility to investigate that.
Okay.
The next one is seven twelve, JHCD, Administering Medication to Students. Following areas have been added to the policy based on legislative requirements. I want to turn your attention to really lines one sixteen to one twenty, where we deleted naloxone, is that how you pronounce that? Did I get that right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks. And added information about opioid antagonists, because it, it's a little broader for us and not specific to a particular one. And it talks about our, our process by which those items can be maintained or administered and the, the record-keeping of it.
Okay. Any questions or concerns on this one?
Bless you.
Sure. All right.
And the final one is one of your policies, BDD, Electronic Participation in Meetings from Remote Locations. There is an annual review that needs to occur with this policy. We are not, Policy Committee, myself, are not recommending any changes, but that you would simply be acknowledging that you reviewed it so that the cycle continues again.
Sounds good. All right, so those will all be on a consent agenda next time. And we will move on to last few items on our agenda. So, our two action items, eight point zero one, Approval of Personnel Actions. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
And item eight point zero two, Approval of Release from Compulsory Attendance for Two Cases, M two five two six dash oh one and M two five two six dash oh two. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the release from compulsory attendance for cases number M two five two six dash zero one and M two five two six dash zero two.
I second that one as well.
You. Mrs. Donner and Mrs. Hunley?
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
All right, we'll move on to board member comments. Mr. Riffle, can I start with you?
Thank you, Madam Chair, sure. Did a lot of things last week. I was at Berkeley the first day of school and just hung out the car line and the bus loop, and that was fun with the principal and some of the, the breakfast staff. I got to, just to meet their students, and I was invited just by a parent, and I reached out to the principal, and that was nice. And then I spent the whole day with Ms. Dr. Worley, the good morning part of Wednesday. And then I attended an AP African-American Studies class, the second block at Jamestown, to thank the students for their interest in it, and I know that's growing across our division. So, it was fun to, to do those things, and it felt like every day I was in school, and I wish the bus could just pick me up, you know, so. Um, so I was kidding. But I know it's been a great start. I think a lot of, it's just good to see, I have a couple of new students in my neighborhood that have moved from being, I know, they were not in preschool, but now they're in kindergarten and now they're going to school. So, it's just nice to talk to the parents and see the excitement of the division and, and getting invitations to come to sport events and things like that. So, I'm excited for the year and look forward to, you know, how we can keep encouraging our students to, to keep moving. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Uh, Mr. Hosang?
The only comment I have is, I had a parent reach out to me regarding bus pickup, bus drop-off, the times. It was delayed, I think she, she said it was like a half-hour delay in picking up the students or dropping the students off. So, I, I guess we just be mindful of that, and I, and I know it was just the first week of school, so there may be some issues. I, I don't know the specifics as to exactly where this occurred, but I know that's an ongoing issue that we're gonna have, and we do have in our school system. So, if there's a way, we can keep an eye on that and, and keep trying to improve that. And I know we're trying to improve that every day, just to be mindful of that.
Thank you, Mr. Ossing. Mrs. Hunley?
Just to piggyback on that, I, I'm excited about the ten drivers that are in training, and that will help alleviate some of that, you know, the, the routes, you know, to get more people behind the wheel. I don't think my abstract bus did it. I think me behind the wheel of a bus and driving it.
That was it.
People are like, if, if school board can drive a bus, I can. Yes, I was excited to get to Stonehouse, Toano, Matthew, Bailey, Berkeley, and Blair. And I was with Dr. Kever for most of it. And every time he asked kids how you were doing, they were all smiles and giving thumbs up, and teacher said things were going well. And as a former teacher, there is a honeymoon period. So, they're in that phase, but I'm hoping that extends. A couple of kids said they were tired, and I was very professional because I wanted to say there is no kind of tired than a teacher, bus driver, cafeteria. Everybody that works in this school system went home and napped because it's just, it is very tiring that first week. And, but I'm excited about all the reports we have. It's kind of overwhelming to see them all, but what I perceive from everything is we're trending in the positive direction, and I'm excited about that. And that's all my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Ms. Chen?
I also had some great, uh, week one school visits. So, yes, I agree with everything that Ms. Hunley said. It seems like the first week was off to a, a very positive start. Good feedback from teachers as well as the students. There was just a sense of enthusiasm and excitement. I got the privilege of walking around with Mr. Walker to Stonehouse, JB Blatton and Hornsby. At Stonehouse, there's so many things, but I just wrote down a few quick thoughts. At, at Stonehouse, we got to see the counseling department. They applied for a grant and had two beautiful rooms set up for students to come and reset. And one was a beach theme, and the other one was camping, which I thought was quite appropriate for the sort of summer to fall transition that kids are going through right now. And then at Stonehouse, we also learned that the, um, the sub who's there all the time is also an artist who painted the school and, and has, in addition to the artwork that's already there. And then at, at JB Blatton, we got to see our new math curriculum that we all approved in action in, in several different classrooms. And then Benchmark Year Two also sort of modeled in some of the classrooms. And then at Hornsby, there were so many things again, but one of the highlights was meeting some of the LEAP teachers, and that was something that we had approved in our budget to increase the number of LEAP teachers. So, we were able to observe a co-lab, co-teaching environment, which I really think is kind of like the ideal to learn, where kids who are, have support with English, but also in a regular classroom learning environment, learning with special educator, uh, special educator teacher there as well as LEAP teachers, as well as a regular teacher. So, that was definitely a highlight of Hornsby. And then Mrs. Hunley, Dr. Kever and I, we got to go to Berkeley and Blair. And at Blair, we got to say hello to Ms. Donner's daughter and got to observe lots of learning going on there as well. And then at Berkeley, my old stomping grounds, I definitely gave some extra hugs to teachers there. And we were invited to be part of a cup stacking challenge. It was just so much fun. I agree with Mr. Riffle. I just wanted to spend the whole day there. So, it was a lot of, yeah, yeah, it was hard to go back to work after being in the schools. But, yeah, those were just some of the highlights I wanted to share.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you. I was looking at some of the statistics that Dr. Kever provided earlier about achievement in the division, and the one that interested me the most is reading. The twenty-four, twenty-five figure was seventy-eight percent passes of the SOLs, which was essentially the same as the two previous years. But it's understanding that the goal by twenty-eight is to be at eighty-five percent, so I'm sure that'll be achieved. But I was wondering if there's any way we could maybe get to that goal sooner? I mean, perhaps we could communicate to the public and to the parents that there's a need to read at home and to really be completely dedicated to the sense of reading by the third grade. I, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that seventy-eight percent means twenty-two. I I don't want to lose sight of the fact that seventy eight percent means twenty two percent, um. Uh, those are students, that's a particular number of students, not just a percentage. Um, and if we really maybe can change and really focus on the third graders, um, talking to everybody who touches them. Um, saying, you know, reading, 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 reading. The second thing is um. The uh, the board's been sort of assured that lacrosse would happen in twenty seven. So I hope we don't lose the enthusiasm for that. I know there's some problems with um, um, Cooley Field, which belongs to Williamsburg, but. Um, our president said that that's gonna be resolved, so almost, you know, you get, they're not gonna, it's gonna all work where our guards to. Funding that issue, whatever you guys are working on, I'm sure you'll solve it and that would make it easier to get Cooley resurfaced, so if that's the one big impediment, hopefully that'd get resolved. Um, and then um, finally, I'm I'm really excited about the fact that there's a lot of folks interested in J R O T C. And I I know there's some obstacles, but I think that through all, everybody's efforts, I think we will accomplish what we want to accomplish, I think we'll get one.
All right, thank you, Dr. Cavazos, Mrs. Donner.
Uh, thank you, I uh, I'm going to be bringing up the rear with Mr. with Dr. Kever with visiting schools on Friday and hopefully. He's is the only one who gets assigned an assignment. I'm a little scared going with him.
You need to get assignments as well.
I'm gonna repeat the cat, so I'm ahead of people. Just, I echo what all of my colleagues have said and just, um, there was a large community event on the twenty third. Uh, real people educate, or real people educating others and I just want to appreciate them is that they had. Backpacks and haircuts and all sorts of things to get our kids started on the right foot and lots of community partners there. From the Girl Scouts to um, sororities and fraternities to uh, just resources within the community, so just appreciate whenever. That's just one example of the many volunteers that help make sure our kids are um, ready and also appreciate that. Our elected officials from both the county and the city were there along with our police chiefs and firefighters, so just want to highlight that.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Donner, um, I too had an exciting first week of school and the first day, um, I got to tour. Several schools with Dr. Kever, um, I think we started at Laurel Lane, went to D J, J B B, Hornsby and Operations. Um, and got to just experience the 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 buzz and the enthusiasm of the first day. I was impressed by the garage at Operations, I've never seen a garage that clean before. It just, it felt like a very pristine space to be working on a bus engine, so I. That's, that just struck me, um, and uh, other than that, the other thing that struck me at all the, just my overall. Sense from the first day of school was despite all the excitement and despite all the newness, um, and the and the. The clear joy and and smiling faces I saw and both teachers and students, there was also a a striking sense of calm. Um, it wasn't chaotic and crazy and and people not knowing where to go and and going all over the place, there was, there was really a sense of calmness and and order and all the teachers. Just had it under control from what I saw, um, and I know that that doesn't just happen, that that. Is not just experience of the teacher themselves and all the years they've they've trained and honed their skill, but just even in the days and weeks leading up to the start of school, that's. Probably hours and hours of work of getting everything prepared and everything ready so that um, those first days go very smoothly. And Mrs. Hunley's nodding, so I know I'm on the right track now, so, so I just want to thank all the teachers for everything that they did before. They even saw the first kid on the first day and for everything that they did this first week, um, I hope everyone enjoyed a four day weekend and that. Today's reentry back to school was smoother than mine, one of my kids decided they didn't want to go to school anymore, so.
Honeymoon's over.
It's the beginning, but anyway, tomorrow will be better, um, but yeah, just lots of, lots of excellent. Work that I know is going on all around our school division and of course, the staff here, the the phenomenal presentation we saw today, that was. Also a heavy lift and we greatly appreciate it and we also appreciate the content, the the. K P I's that are being met, the results that are, that we have to show, um, it's not just about throwing up some slides, but really having excellent content to. To present in those slides, so we thank all of you. Upcoming events, if my screen will change, um, special education committee will meet on September tenth. At five P M in room one oh eight, the school board office. Policy committee will meet on September eighteenth at eight thirty A M in room two oh three of the school board and central office. And there's a V S B A legislative advocacy conference on ni- uh, September nineteenth. Starting at nine A M at the Chesterfield Career and Technical Center in Midlothian, Virginia. And at least a handful of us will be there, I don't know if all seven, but several of us will be there. Upcoming meetings. We will have a school board retreat, which is an all day event starting at eight A M on September twelfth. Will take place at the boardroom and Dogwood Conference Room at William and Mary School of Education in Williamsburg. Um, then our closed session, our our next meeting is on uh, September sixteenth, our closed session will begin at five forty five P M. In room two hundred of Berkeley Middle School. Um, and our regular meeting will follow that at six thirty P M in the Berkeley Middle School auditorium. I think some people, even though we have signaled this for quite some time, some people were taken aback last month when we met at Berkeley and not Blair. So we just want to reiterate again, this has been something that we've been working towards for some time and we will have all of our regular meetings at Berkeley. Um, then our next work session um, will be on October seventh. That will be back here at room, room three hundred of the annex, closed session begins at four P M. And the work session with action items begins at four thirty P M in this room. And with that, our agenda is set for our regular meeting and we are adjourned.